Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal.
He states the flag. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Go call.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Councilmember Brooke Markot.
Here.
Councilmember Marla Lewis. Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swear.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment. We have any public comment cards tonight?
Yep.
Okay, seeing none, I use this time to tell you to put your phone on silent, vibrate. And if we had public comment, there's no back and forth, we just listen. But now we'll move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of August fifteenth, 2023, which were published on August twenty-fourth, 2023.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and Councilwoman Brooke Markot, is there any discussion on these minutes of August fifteenth? Seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three A.
Thomas Fowle to give an update on the Greater Arberia Chamber of Commerce.
Is it on? It's on.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, Thomas Fowle, Greater Arberia Chamber of Commerce, here to just kind of really thank you guys again for working with us for the last thirty-three years on putting on a gumbo cook-off. This one's looking to be bigger than ever. I mean, we have, we're sold out on teams again. There's no more room to put a sponsor if I wanted one. So it's a good thing usually that also, now we just need the weather to be good and a little cooler and no hurricanes, no storms, none of those things, and we'll be good. In front of you, you have a lineup, and I'm not going to go over it because you have it, but it's a two-day lineup. Saturday, of course, is our Creole Cajun Food Fest. Lots going on. Starts with a root run that On Tap is going to be doing and throughout the day. And then Sunday, of course, is the granddaddy of all the world championship gumbo cook-off. And I will say you will not find a better bowl of gumbo anywhere in the world than in downtown New Iberia on that day. The other thing, and there's no tickets to come, people can come and sit and listen to music, it's a free event to attend. The only, we ask that they don't bring any ice chests or pets. The only tickets they would need to buy on Saturdays and Sundays for any food or drinks they would want. We also have an event that we've been doing, I guess, four or five years now inside Victor's Cafeteria. It's a Sasebon cooking demo, and it's going to be a really good event. That's the, that is a ticket event. It's a fifty-dollar a person, part seventy-five for a couple. There's going to be food with Chef John Reason and Louisiana Coloring Institute, drink pairings with everything from the appetizer, the meal, the gumbo, as well as the dessert. So there'll be different drinks. There's also going to be products, again, from Tabasco and Sauvage and steamed syrup involved in this. There's going to be some music going on by, the desserts will be by Chef Willie Gospod at Cypress Bayou. The live music with Brandon Menard and Paul Shexnatter will be doing a live, some type of live painting that we may auction off that night or at another time throughout the year. That is, that's going to go on Inside Victor's from four to seven PM on the Saturday. I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody has about gumbo or chamber or anything.
Okay. Questions, comments? Other than thank you?
Yes.
Thanks for the job y'all do.
Thank you.
Good.
Oh, thank you.
Four A.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one thirty-eight, appointing Warren White to the Housing Authority of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion. Councilman Marla Lewis and who had the second?
I wasn't sure who had the second.
We both motioned.
Kind of like one voice. Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Good evening.
Good evening.
And I see that you're here, and that's awesome. That's a good thing. A good thing.
I'm here to thank you all, the mayor and the councilmen, to have confidence in me to have this position. And as everybody know, I dedicate my time to the community of Iberia Parish in the city. Only thing I wish my parents was here to see the good job that I'm doing, and I want to thank myself.
No.[303.08][303.08](laughter)
They can see it.
Yeah, they can see it. That's funny. Questions, comments?
I think Warren put together that clamp.
No.[314.12][314.12](laughter) It wasn't me this time.
Oh, congratulations for serving, man. You know, me and Warren served on a couple of boards together. Awesome leader, awesome servant, and as y'all see, he always got family support. Always got family support.
All right, all right.
And that's big. So, thank you for your service, Warren, as always, to this community. Anything I can do personally to help, you know, you can reach out to me.
I'd also like to, to thank you for your service to the community. I want to echo exactly what Councilwoman Lewis said, but I also wanted people to know that I think you're going to do a great job on this housing board. We need your help, and I think that you're going to be the difference that's been needed on the board for a while. So thank you for being willing to serve, and we look forward to all the great things that are going to be coming down the pipeline.
Thank you all for, you know, for appointing me and have the confidence in me, you know, because I'm getting a little teary, but thank you all.[376.12][376.12](laughter)
Anybody else?
Thank you as well for everything you do. Any event I go to, I usually see you there.
Yeah, we always see you.
Yes, and so you're very involved in the community all over, which is excellent. So thank you for stepping up.
I see you everywhere.
Yeah, and also I'm going to be on, I'm going to be appointed to the Constellation Board on the twenty-seventh.
Good.
Nice.
Good.
They have the confidence, they want me to be on that board, too. I'm trying to serve everywhere I can serve.
Good.
Great.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you again, like everybody else said. I mean, there's not a whole lot of people willing to serve in this community, especially on tough boards and commissions like you chose to have. So kudos to you, and anything we can do to help you, you try.
Well, I will.[418.16][418.16](laughter)
Good, good.
Thank you.
Warren, just stop at sixteen boards, because you need at least eight hours to sleep. At least eight hours to sleep.
All right. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say congratulations, because I'm sure we're going to accept you, the recommendation for you to serve.
We'll find out in a second.
I'm pretty sure about it.
I thought I had it already. Okay.
No, we do have to vote on that.
Okay, y'all, come on in, vote it.
But.[450.25][450.25](laughter)
Now you're running for mayor. No, I'm sorry.[455.12][455.12](laughter)
Don't make me see the councilman.
No, I'm just. This vote is very important to our city. And hopefully, they are going to continue on a new path, and you will be part of that. And the, those housing facilities will be improved, much improved, and just glad to have you there because they definitely need your support, really do.
I'll get my hundred percent.
Thank you very much.
I got to do with everything else.
Any other questions or comments? All right, with the moment we've been waiting for, vote your machines.
No read, no read, no read.[502.31][502.31](laughter)
Sure, y'all gonna have some lively meetings with you all.
I'm going to bring life to it.
It's a good thing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good. All right, moving on to four B.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one thirty-nine, accepting change order numbers two through seven for the City Park and Weston Park Community Center Improvements Project, FPNC number fifty dash ML one dash twenty dash zero two, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation. In connection therewith, all contingent upon approval from the Office of Facility Planning and Control.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. David, tell us about it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the state came to us and said that they had some extra money in this project that we weren't anticipating. So with the contractor on site, we went through with the state what we could use the money for, and basically interior improvements, income facility improvements that would enhance both rec centers. So we went with our contractor, and he helped price out some information. So I'm going to kind of run through the scope of work. Laney, do you have that graphic?
I'm looking for it.
Not a big deal if you don't. Essentially, what we're going to start with is replacing for both gyms the lighting in the actual gym. High bay lighting, designed for sports, designed for impact resistance, things like that. It's going to change.
People just asked me to ask Freddie about it.
It's coming, it's coming.
So that's for both gyms. We're also looking at in Weston, the MLK Center, the weight room has some lighting refurbishment, not replacement, but refurbishment, and same in the lobby space. There also is a new corridor out of the gymnasium on the back end that needs a new ceiling there. It's a little green corridor coming off the gym. It needs a new ceiling, there's no ceiling there, so we're going to kind of tidy that up and make it look a lot better.
They, we're going, if you walk in the gym, it's on the right side, or you say the little hallway?
You see when you're actually in the gym.
Okay, you're in the gym.
You're facing the stage.
Uh-huh.
That green.
To the right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. That's, that goes outside, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that was, they used to use that for storage and stuff. I remember that.
You see all kind of junk in there.
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to address that. There's no ceiling in it. It looks like there was, it got ripped out, I don't know.
Okay. But are they still using it for storage? I hadn't looked in there. You don't know what they're really using it for?
They have a couple of pieces of equipment that they put in there, but it's a pain because when we play pickleball, the ball goes straight underneath, and then we got to move all that out just to get the ball. So we could put something to block that, that would be great.
So on this graphic, the other big chunk of the project is painting. So everything in blue has been painted on the facility. Everything in green is being proposed to be painted with this change order, and the red is items that have yet to be painted.
Which we have capital outlay.
Yeah, future plans.
Future plans, you know, to catch the rest of it, just to tell you at both, at both community centers.
A lot of those is the, is the restrooms.
Yes.
Or storage rooms that probably will never get painted at this point, just because they're of the function, not public use.
Right.
But the restrooms need a lot more involvement with stripping of the paint, grinding, and things like that than our budget allows. So we had to kind of X those out.
So is that something that's going to be part of capital outlay?
It's part of the capital outlay money that we've been approved that is coming. So in next capital outlay for the two gyms, we're going to handle the restrooms in both of them, because it's a large project.
They're bad in both.
But that will be the last piece. If you think about it, and in this year's budget of our own money, we'll be putting, I'll be asking you to put a hundred thousand dollars into replace the air conditioning at Weston. So what we're fast coming up with is we've got new roofs, we'll have new air conditioning in both gyms, we're changing all the lighting, and now we're handling all the finishes and the painting. So it won't be long, you know, another year or so, our, our both gyms, our, our two major facilities for quality of life, you know, recreation will be completely redone.
Okay, floors? Gym floors?
We're going to have to see. That, that's the one thing I don't know in the next phase if we're going to have enough money to, to do them completely.
Okay.
That, that might be the last piece.
Okay.
That's expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um, let's see. Also in the gym, we're going to be painting the ceiling. So it's kind of a yellowish tinted ceiling system now.
It used to be white.
Yeah, well, it's going to be white again.
It's suspended, okay?
So, yeah, suspended. Instead of replacement, it was cheaper to paint it, and we've done that a few times on projects and turns out pretty good.
So the lighting's going to make it a lot brighter?
Oh, it's going to be different.
Okay, good.
A lot different. And those colors really show when you change the lighting, because we've got some good, good colors now, so it's, it's going to pop.
It's going to be white lighting instead of the kind of yellow or.
Yeah, because that's, it's hard to see things with that lighting.
Yeah. It should make a difference.
So you're going to remove the existing fixtures, fluorescent fixtures, and replace them on the new fixture, or?
Correct. Now, there's years of light fixtures up there.
Yes, I saw, I noticed.
Some of them are sort of these trough lighting rings that go around the gym. We can't change those because those are integrated into the ceiling system, but we are going to put sort of a cover over it, like a blank, just to kind of hide it a little more. But we are going to, I think they're, they're two-by-twos now. Those are going to come down and be replaced with another two-by-two.
Okay.
Okay. LED?
All right, and then for sear gates, very similar scope gym, new lighting. We have some lighting in the lobby area that we're, we're trying to address. There's actually some water damage on the ceilings and firdowns in that lobby we're going to take care of as well. All the blue has been painted, all the green is proposed to be painted, and then the red is yet to be painted. There are some parts of this facility that actually have been painted maybe, I guess, before Freddie's administration, years ago, so they're not that far off in quality. But this should, again, help to, you know, encompass a larger painting project to help touch as much as we, as we can on this building. We have, there are some old glass louvered transom windows on the front of the building that you can still see, and we're going to cover those with sheet rock, too, to kind of hide that.
Yeah, they're covered on the outside, too.
Yeah. So, and new, and the, the ceilings will be painted as well in the gym area. So very comparable scopes of work, and that was the goal. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Looking good, coming right along.
It will, absolutely.
So when's the lighting project going to start?
As soon as we, that's the first change order on this list. Now, that's going to take a while to get the lighting in.
Okay.
That's the, that's why we got it first, because it just takes a while to get electrical stuff in these days. So I'm not sure yet on the timeframe on that, but as soon as we get them to go ahead, they're going to try to order it and get some submittals, and we'll take a look at Hopefully, it's a common fixture and not too specialty, but we're experiencing delays on lights a lot, so.
Okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four C.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one forty, approving amendment number one of the contract between the City of New Iberia and Architect Paul Allen for the City Park and Weston Park Community Center Improvements Project, FPNC number fifty dash ML one dash twenty dash zero two, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Wow. Motion, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Marla Lewis. Is there, David, tell us about this one?
Yeah, this is corresponds to these change orders with this extra money. It allows us to make an adjustment on our contract to cover the scope, to do the design, bidding process, and then the construction administration work we'll have to continue out with the completion of it.
Correct. Questions, comments?
So we're getting.
Yes, sir.
Total new roofs, new roofs?
Roofs are done.
That's what I thought.
Roofs are done. We finished the roofs. All this is to do what we were talking about.
Change orders.
Item before the change order.
Okay.
The painting and lighting upgrades.
So let me ask you, this money, this, this money is like, I want to call it rebate money or something?
We don't know what it is, but we said yes. We were basically just offered that we could get some additional money, so we weren't crazy, we said thank you.
Okay.
And, but it was related only to these projects. So on the gyms, we were allowed to, to do these change orders, so we just told them thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
So this is a change in the fee for the architect?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right.
This is their percentage off the new work.
Right, okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Four D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one forty-one, approving change order number one for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Weston Park Improvements, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and I think, did you second it? Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed had the second. That's fine.
Okay, so this is for the West End Park Renovations Project.
Which is the school, right? No?
No, this is the park.
Oh, I know what it is now, sorry. I got too many projects.
They all similar, too. So this is an extension of contract time that the contractor has requested, basically because they're backordered on their sports lighting that is supposed to illuminate the, the ball field. So like I was just saying, we have delays, and this is.
No money, no money, just time. No money, just time.
Just time.
Okay.
Just sixty-four extra days on the contract.
Now, what do you say about the lighting?
Yeah, so there's about six or eight light poles out there currently that's around the large sports field. We're changing all those poles, and we're putting new LED lighting to help illuminate that area. The light fixtures themselves are backordered and delayed, and they are, we're constantly getting new shipping dates, and they're just not committing to it, the, the suppliers. And so this just helps to cover, because the contractor is obligated to finish the project in a certain amount of time. And if they go over that, you know, for certain reasons, that aren't their own fault, you know, we want to make sure that they get extensions, and, and this is one of those qualifying things.
Now, that fence, that back fence that was torn down, is, what is the reason for that fence being torn down? The back, the fence in between the school, so they had the fence that enclosed the, the foot, the, uh, the baseball field.
Right.
That fence has been removed, right?
Yes. And it's now along the property.
We relocated along the property line.
Okay, that's what, okay.
The railroad tracks.
Now we fenced off the whole park.
Right.
In other words.
And it's fenced, it's basic, is it fenced from the railroad track? Like, the kids can't cross the track and use?
Yes. Right now, the whole thing is fenced. And we're still having some issues with people cutting it, but the new security system's up and running at the school we bought. I think that, that problem will be solved pretty quick. Yes, ma'am.
So are we going to block off that road, like, right when you get to the school so that people can't go down there with their cars?
We're going to have the ability to block it off?
Yeah, they, they just installed some removable bollards.
Right.
So there are five steel pipes that fit into a sleeve, and the Parks and Rec have the ability to remove them, to let cars through, and then put them back, and no one can go through.
Yeah, you know, if we were having a function that we wanted to be able to let people through, you know, the baseball field, the tennis court, the pavilion, you know, it's how you get there.
Right.
So we want it to be flexible, but there are going to be times that we would probably rather have it blocked off, because once the school, phase one, phase two, we know we have a lot of phases of the school. But in phase one, we're going to begin with the Senior Citizen Center and a small computer lab that we still haven't found the funding for the computers, but we'll, we'll get there. But we're going to continue to utilize that space. When the fall comes and it's a little cooler, we're going to do a community garden there. So there's going to be a lot of times that we're going to want to have that flow of kids. But maybe we don't want the cars all the time, so that's why we wanted it flexible.
Right, so because of senior center and all of the things that you just talked about are going to be on that, when you go into our, the park, it'll be like the first thing you get to, that street, I don't know the name of that street.
Gibbs Lane.
Gibbs, is that the name of it? Okay, so.
Obie, I'm sorry.
Obie?
Obie's the side street, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the street, I'm sorry.
The street in the park, I don't know what it's called.
No, no, I'm talking about the street.
Yeah, it's Obie.
Obie Street, he's right. So you can take that left to go down to Obie, Obie Street. There is an entrance to that, to the senior center from that side, correct?
Yes.
So we could potentially keep those things up so that people are not going through there until the end.
Yeah, so you can, you can come in and park behind the center in the parking lot that's in the back by the baseball field. So we envision people parking there and walking to the Senior Citizen Center. Or if they need to drive, they would just go down Erby, Obie, hang a ride and go into that parking lot at the school.
Okay, all right, just wanted.
The bollards are, there's a gate on the corner.
And you could actually turn into that gate.
You put the bollards.
Yeah.
Past the gate.
Yeah, if that gate's open, you could turn right there.
Okay.
Impeded by the bollards.
Okay, all right. I was just trying to make sure that we have a way of keeping people from going back there when.
Yeah.
It's not a need for them to be there.
Yeah, and we just started to think, you know, the.
Car, not a person, a car.
Right. The walking trail's going to go back there and go around, so we really wanted to keep the, you know, the vehicular traffic to a minimum.
Right, exactly.
But have that flexibility, because sometime, you know, we, we might, we might want it all open.
Right, absolutely. Okay, just checking.
That's good. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, David. Four E.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one forty-two, approving the twenty-two-four dash twenty-two-five Capital Outlay Project Priority List.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and Councilman Dustin Swear, and in your packet, you have a list. Let me get to it. Tried to make it a little concise this year, but of course, I'm open to, you know, your input. So Pepperplex, we have one million. Bank Street Aquatic Center, which is a swimming pool, and they funded the architecture this year, and so we're asking for the pool next year. That would be a three million dollar ask, which is a very large one. City Parks, we put another six hundred thousand. That would be three hundred per park. Uh, City Parks, we put another six hundred thousand, that would be three hundred per park. That would allow us whatever we wouldn't get done in this next year, with the money that we have coming, that would allow us another three hundred thousand per gym to make sure, may- maybe that's your gym floor. But whatever's left, that would be the final piece.
Okay.
And then, we're getting close on the frontage road, with the million dollars that we didn't ask for, but we got this year, with the money that we had put in at the very beginning, when at the second or third meeting when we took office, that they were gonna take the project away from us. And then last year, they gave us a little money from Capital Outlay. When you total it all up, we also have one point five million that's sitting with NPO in Lafayette for this project. If we got this last one point five, then we could put the frontage road in. And that's the frontage road at the area that the city owns the property, at the Spanish Town, off of fourteen, that's the property that we could put two big boxes, and if we leased it to them instead of sold it to them, they would never pay property taxes, so it would be a huge win for us, for the jobs and for the sales taxes. But we can't do that. The people that early on, when I first got here, we had talked about trying to entice with those incentives, won't come unless there's a frontage road. So, but that is an area that, you know, could be too new, you know, I, I'm gonna say maybe there's our steakhouse, or there's our Cracker Barrel, there's some, you know, big thing that attracts people off the highway that we actually would generate a lot of jobs and a lot of taxes. So that's why the frontage road's in there. We normally ask for all kind of other stuff, unfor- that we never get, that we're not gonna get. Uh, so what I was trying was a different approach this, this year, by asking for six point one, and saying, this is what we need, this is, you know, how we think we need it, and really work hard to, to see that we would get this. And the pool, I think we have a really good shot, 'cause normally when they fund the architecture in one year, they fund the project in the next year. Um, so that's kind of, uh, you know, what I put together, and now it's time for us to talk about it. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, what would we use the million dollars for in the Pepperplex?
We have continually more phases to go. We kinda have a little master plan working, and we, uh, the parking lot is always gonna be a big need. We are doing in this year's Capital Outlay, a big pavilion that will double as five pickleball courts, because that is so popular, and we're really trying to get more people to the park, more people to utilize it as a park, because it is, it is part of our, it's separate and runs separate by Richard, he does a great job, but we need to continually try to get more of our citizens engaged. Um, we, the existing, uh, concession stand is old. At some point, we're gonna need to remodel that. We have a few drainage issues left in some of the outfields and areas that I think we could do some more on. We have, uh, this, this money we have now should do the batting cage and the pavilion, but there's, there's a list. I mean, there's, there's certainly more need. We're gonna have some other lighting needs, there's, uh, opportunities that, we have more projects than we have money.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you from the master study we've been putting together, at some point, we're gonna want some better playground equipment out there, in an area where kids won't get hit by a foul ball, and where, you know, as these tournaments start coming, and they will, we really need to be ready to hold people there and the whole families there. So as we succeed, there are some things coming that, you know, we, we certainly could utilize.
Okay.
'Cause to cash in, you know, and I never look at that, you never hear me talking about the revenues of travel ball. You, you, you just wait, and to me, you, you don't talk smack, you prove it. But we need to be ready for that. We need to be ready for as the facility is used and as people come in, we have another item to talk about on the agenda tonight, for the Pepperplex, to make sure that it succeeds. Uh, but that's what that would be useful.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm, I'm excited about the aquatic center on Bank Street Park, and you know, you, you said that, uh, they already signed money for, um, for the plans, right?
Yes, they've given us the three hundred thousand for the plans. That's gonna start very soon. We didn't have to go through, we had to find out if we needed to go through facility planning for that money, we didn't. So we've already asked them, you'll be bringing me a contract probably at the next meeting so that they can start the design, and remember, this is an Admiral Doyle address. This is on Admiral Doyle, you'll come in from Admiral Doyle, or you can come in the back way from Bank. Uh, we're calling it that it's part of Bank Park, but we're reimagining Bank Park. We're investing a lot of money there. It's by all of the retail, it's by the hotels. We've already talked to the high schools. They're gonna partner with us in the fact that they're gonna hold all their swim tournaments there. I think that's important. Again, I'm looking for body count, I'm looking for everything that we spend money on to make sure that our community is, is well-served and is utilizing it. So, uh, getting the high school swim teams is, is huge, because, and they're all close to that area. So the combination of that, swimming lessons, allowing our kids to learn how to swim, it's a central location, uh, people can get to it. Um, we kind of all agreed in past conversations that that was a good compromise, if you will, for the history of our pools. Uh, so I, I think that it works. But I'm excited about it, too. Yes, sir.
So I think, I think when we look at these projects, I think what, what excites me is that when you're in Baton Rouge and they're talking about Capital Outlay, they look at the cities that have invested or made a, a commitment to some project before they wanna invest along with you, and if you look at all four of these, obviously, the Pepperplex, we have tr- invested a tremendous amount of money and we're moving along quite nicely. Bank Street, we already got the architecture fees, you know, City Park, we just discussed investing more money on ceilings and stuff, so and the frontage road, we've been sitting on a big chunk of cash and waiting on the state. So I think when you look at these four projects, they, they pertinent to our community, can affect everybody that resides in this community, and could be a huge impact, really does. So I, I like the list, really do.
Good. Yes, sir.
I still think, but, uh, future I forty-nine coming through is gonna happen eventually, to get to the hospitals. It's gonna happen somewhere or the other. Something's gonna happen. And it's gonna be bad if we're not at least on a list that we've been on for the last fifteen years, at least on the list. In case it happens, we all see the light on, the light right there in front of us. Might have to take a, a, the governor's son getting killed, or somebody politically getting killed, to get to those hospitals. I don't see any new hospital being built next to future I forty-nine. So it is a big thing. I don't see we ever gonna see it, Mr. Mayor, but it's been on the outlay bill for the last twelve, fourteen years, if not more. I'd like to see it be put at least on the thing, so in case it ever happens, we can't see when they're next for the money. I thought we had settled that a while back.
Well, our match alone, it's thirty million dollars to build an overpass, so at twenty-five percent match, I, I can't e- I mean, I can't hardly put it on the list and be responsible and say that I could come up with a match. What I don't want somebody to think is we would, I don't disagree with you, and one day it actually might happen, but we can't fund that. We can't even fund the, I'm not being ugly, I love my town, I can't fund the frontage road. You know, so you take twenty-five percent, that's seven million five hundred thousand dollars. There's no way, I, I hate to leave something on a list that I know I can't do. So there's no way, if they said tomorrow, I've got thirty million dollars, you just need to come up with seven million five hundred thousand dollars, we, we can't do it. So that was why I just thought, as the price kept increasing and construction costs only go up, so my attitude was, I don't wanna put something on there that somebody thinks I'm actually gonna do. Because I, 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 there's no way we can. I can leave it on the list, but there's no way, you know, I can't leave it on the list and tell you that if you gave it to me, I could fund it. What if, what if the state gave us that? What if they said, that's what you get, you don't get anything else? I, I don't know how I'd come up with this seven point five million. That's my problem. I'm not telling you no, but, you know.
I have some talks up there still on the overpass. It's a lot of light, light talk, but it's still on their list up there. Found overpass somewhere in Louisiana to come back out, we still have a safety concern, 'cause a lot of the cities have overpasses over railroad track, Kinder. Just over the railroad track. On the Kinder. But it's been my baby for fifteen, eighteen years and-
I know that. A- and if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have all the arms and lights? I mean, I give you, you do, you have worked very hard to get
I know.
Safety is a factor, but I don't know where I'd get seven point five million now.
We'll see how it lands in the long run.
And I'm not saying I can't add it back on the list. Uh, you know, that's what, that's why we're talking about it.
It's still back, I'm sure they can either look at it or not.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'd just like to see it at least on the list.
Okay.
The people of, uh, Yarbury, and the future people of I forty-nine. It's gonna talk. They've got some overpasses down there by Generet. We're way in the front, Mr. Jones running for parish president down there. He got that overpass built in Generet, almost by himself. So, uh, I spent my baby for a lot, my dad, again, eh, when I asked him to run, it was all he said, I'm embarrassed that we can't get over that railroad track to the hospitals. It didn't come out of my mind. That was his old mind. He was embarrassed for a lot of people. That just cannot get over that railroad track, and a lot of people have died and got hurt, and delays. Look at that, derailment we had. Lucky it didn't happen in the middle of town. We have some old rails still left in the middle of town, they didn't change. But I'm on it, I'd like to see it still left on the agenda. On the, I'll leave it, I've been seeing it at least, when I'm calling at least, I know how to look back and-
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, I, I'm new to this particular issue. I just, I was wondering, uh, what does the parish say about this? Because I would think that the parish would be in favor of putting a hospital on this side as well. Because, I mean, it, it could be used by the parish, not just-
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
You mean put an overpass?
Overpass.
Uh, over, uh, overpass?
Yeah, they wouldn't build a hospital, he said a hospital.
Okay.
They're not gonna build another hospital.
So it's not a hospital, it's an overpass?
It's the overpass, to get to the hospital.
Okay. I mean, would the, would the parish be involved in something like that? Would they be able to come up with some money? I mean, it has been an issue in Yarbury for many years. I don't know what the history's been, 'cause I haven't been here, but I'm just asking.
Right. I don't know, that's a, that's a thought. You know, what, what I don't want is that they look at our Capital Outlay ask, and we add that, and then it's, you know, the flip side of it is, oh, no, Yarbury's asking for thirty-six million dollars, you know, when, when that's not realistic. Uh, there is money at the state this coming year. If we're concise and we go after what we want, we're gonna get it. If we add too much money, and they look at that total, 'cause I've had that remark before, well, you're asking for thirty-six million dollars, because they added, or whatever, it was thirty-three last year, or whatever it was. So that does come up when I have to go to Baton Rouge to lobby for the money, which I have to do. It does come up. Well, look at all you're asking for, and then right away, I have to say, yeah, but I really just need the first three, or the first four. You know, which I can do again, but i- if they do throw it in my face sometime, like, whoa, look at how much you're asking for. Um, whether we could talk to the parish and they would be willing to partner on something like that, they, that, that hasn't been the case in the past. That's always been a city project.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, could we possibly look at, uh, the infrastructure, um, bill that came out? Remember, we, uh, at, I was in Lafayette when we went to, um, a session with, with, uh, it was at the time Secretary Sean Wilson.
Yeah, we all sat together.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Now, that would possibly be something, 'cause we do have plans and everything for that. I mean, they're old, but we had some, didn't we?
We had a preliminary, no, we really didn't have plans. We didn't have any construction drawings. Just, all we had was a sketch.
You had a sketch.
It's all about the grade and the slope and how far you can go and how far you have to go, 'cause it's hu- it's much longer than you think, because of the, the grade requirements. So all we had was a sketch that made sure that in the grade required to build an overpass, it would fit. And it went very much further than most people thought it would've, because you gotta build it to the modern, it can't be like the Lake Charles Bridge. You know, you gotta build it to the modern, modern slope, so it, it actually stretches out really long. So all we really have is a sketch. But I can put it back, you know, we can, we can talk about it, you know. I could put them a note, why don't you fund it out of the infrastructure bill? I mean, you know, that might be a way to say it's, it's still on the list.
Put it on the list any kind of way we can, I appreciate it. 'Cause I'm talking to some people up at Baton Rouge, and they, they stay, they say we're still alive. They have that, it costs, so what, how many thousand it costs to do that, that, of the million and a half federal money they had that, uh, that fellow put that book together? It was like s- five, six hundred, it was-
Oh, it was like half a million dollars to do that study. It's not a set of plans either. All it is is a study.
Yeah, but it said, indeed, we need one.
Because they're gonna be ten percent of the thirty-six million dollars, so somebody's gonna get three point six million dollars to design. Half a million dollars was a study.
At the end, the study, the study said, after six months studying, and putting the overpass short on paper, uh, that indeed, Yarbury needs an overpass to get to the hospitals. Can't cut health, can't cut life and death. You know, we've been, how many babies have been born on that side of the track, waiting? How many people died waiting? That's something, when you think about yourself or your brother. Lucky wasn't my brother dead on that side of the track, or somebody I knew real close. 'Cause this happened to some families. I ran across fifteen to twenty, if not twenty-five families, that have had serious injuries, waiting for that train to pass and get to the hospitals. I wish I took down everyone they talked about, and they were very thankful that I keep it on the table. So that's what I'm talking about.
Good.
And it's hard to, hard to get away from people's injuries. Maybe save a life.
Good.
So that's all, I'm, 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 the more I got involved, the more I'm involved, so I left it. But at least we wanna be told that we asking for one.
Alright.
If at all possible. I'll make a motion that we try to put one, put it on the list, if we can.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion?
How do we, do we need a motion for that?
We, we had a-
It's a discussion.
We had a motion to discuss.
Right.
So right now, we're discussing this.
Okay.
Um, I'm not saying you can't make a motion, um-
When you call for the vote, you make a motion.
Yeah.
When he calls for the vote, you make your motion.
Yeah, let me just finish the discussion, and then if you wanna make a motion. Does anybody else wanna discuss what's on the table?
I guess I do.
Yes, ma'am. Great.
Um, we don't have any playground equipment at the Pepperplex now, because it was in bad condition, the one that was out there.
And it wasn't in a good spot.
Yeah, every time I go, uh, parents are asking, when y'all gonna replace the playground equipment? I'm like, I don't know.
That's, that's why we asking for more money.
Yeah, so that is definitely needed, 'cause there's some little ones that don't play yet, and, uh, they need something to do.
We're gonna end up, eventually, with some more playground equipment, in a, in a safer spot, 'cause I don't wanna put it where kids are gonna get hit by a foul ball.
Right.
We also getting a big giant hill. I don't really tell you all about that, but we getting a hill.
A hill?
Yeah, 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 we taking, if you go to Monk's Park and you look at that big hill that they did, and you see kids running up and down it, well, Brooke, you, you, you helping us with a hill, because we're taking the dirt from the retention, detention pond. I've already told the engineers, and they said, what do you wanna do with that dirt? And I said, I wanna bring it to Pepperplex. So behind the T-ball fields, we, we kinda, David and I, and, and, uh, Richard are gonna lay it out, but behind the T-ball fields back there, we can end up with a big giant hill, which is gonna be cool, and it will be like the one in Monk's Park, and kids can play on it. It'll be our cheapest, long-term playground equipment. But we have to make it at a grade that Richie can cut the grass, okay? But I'm not gonna stick him, but at some point, we getting a hill. Uh, but playground equipment is definitely in the master study.
Okay, good deal.
And a hill.
Nice.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Broussard, what you wanna do? Make a motion?
Well, we got a million and a half dollars in the beginning from, in two thousand and five, from Mr. Vitter.
Mm-hmm, which we used.
We used it for arms and lights, which we put five sets up.
Yeah, you did.
And, uh, we got another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Kathleen Blanco for the overpass. Which we used for the Almanco Canal.
Almanco Canal.
Yeah.
So we did a lot of good with that money.
Did all the good we used.
I got the attention of a few people higher up, that's gonna have some higher up stuff to do whenever somebody dies. And you know as I know, if it gets important, people that die, finally, or we have enough, we have enough people that die at the railroad track, they're gonna do something. So I just wanna be told that we on the table, at least this council is still backing up. We need the overpass sometime or other, or they gotta do something.
Can I give you one idea before you make your motion?
Yeah, what?
I just came to my head, so I might as well ask. Instead of asking for the whole thing, why don't you do like the pool and ask for the design money?
Yeah.
Anything to keep?
Then it's on the list, it's alive. I don't think they, and if they do, m- Councilman Broussard, I'm happy. But I don't think they're gonna give it to us, but they certainly not give us thirty-six million, but what if they gave us three million to do the design work? And my match is a whole lot less. It's still alive. If they ever gave us the design money, they'd have to give us the other money. I don't think that's gonna happen, but I know, that's important to you. I've worked with you for, since I got here, uh, if, if, if that would be a compromise.
That's why we're on that list. We on the list for the state when I do talk to them.
Okay.
You know where we are.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll be the devil's advocate, I think, you know, Mr. Broussard's correct, he's on this, but if you wanna switch the design, are you prepared to match the design money?
Mm-hmm.
You are prepared?
Well, I, I could be better prepared to match three million dollars than it is to match thirty-six million dollars.
I, I agree, so, alright, so he is prepared to match it, that's fine.
I'm alright with that.
You're alright with that?
Motion-
Well, make your motion.
Make the motion to get design money, and I'll be satisfied, we're on the list.
Okay, and, and-
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson-Reed. Uh, any discussion on this new motion?
Is that a motion to approve this list?
It's need to substitute-
Right now, we're gonna, we making a motion to add something to the list, and then I thought I'd have a motion to approve the whole list.
Okay.
All I did was motion to discuss so far.
Okay.
Need a substitute motion.
Yeah, yeah, I will. So on this is a motion to add something to the list. Is there any discussion on this motion? What's that?
You don't know how much?
We'll, we'll just say that the engineering fees and if it's, I mean, we guessing anyway, if it's thirty million dollars, we'll say, you know, three million. Any discussion?
Oh, I just wanna commend Mr. Broussard for his fight, man, for mi- so, so many years for, for public safety and, and his passion for that fight actually helped us get the Almanco Canal.
It did.
You know, uh, my, my aunt Peggy, you know, she told me, she's, you know, she, she said, you know, Mr. Broussard, you know, he fought, and she fought, and, you know, people at the parish fought, and they moved the four million dollars that he went and getting, put in Almanco Canal, so his fight hadn't been in vain, so definitely, you know, one hundred percent support his passion for public safety.
But a yes vote right now, we'll add that to the list.
Yep, and then we'll have one more vote after that, Mr. Broussard.
I approve that.
Anybody else?
Alright.
If it ever happens-
Yes, ma'am.
I guess we have to name the overpass after you.
It's a long shot.
Put a lot of time enough for it to do it.
He has to be dead. State law, you can't name anything after a politician, because they named the New Orleans Airport after Lesh, who was Huey's handpicked governor, and then Lesh went to federal prison, and they had to spend all kind of money renaming everything. So we actually have a law that you cannot name anything after any politician until they're dead.
'Cause then you know they're gonna do nothing wrong.
Right. Well, just know that, Mr. B. If you pass away and this happens after, you know, I'll campaign for it to be named after you.
I'm just trying to keep it alive.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Okay, so that will be added to the list. Now we're gonna need, if, if we have no other discussion, we would need a, a motion to vote on and approve the list.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gosselin-
As amended.
As amended, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion on our list now? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Alright, thank you all.
Thank you all, council.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. B.
Need to read my packet before the meeting, Mo.
You gotta do. Alright, item four F.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one forty-three, approving project list for Act three ninety-seven and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlo Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion on this item?
This is, this is really nice, that we have an opportunity to do something more in our communities. Um, so thank you for thinking of this.
Thank you, Marlo.
Well, I was just gonna ask you, but, uh, this is the twenty-eight thousand that you're gonna be giving to-
Yeah, this, this-
We're gonna be getting.
This money, each one of you will get twenty-seven thousand and some change to-
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
It's twenty, twenty-eight something.
Twenty-five, seventy-one.
Project in your district from our master study. That's what I'd like to do with that money. And then, uh, a hundred thousand will go toward the match on the Pepperplex, 'cause we're getting three hundred. So it gave everybody, we did this one time before, and each person had a hundred thousand dollars.
Look, man, I just wanna say a, a, about the Pepperplex money and the attention we're giving the Pepperplex. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, man, I support the Pepperplex one hundred percent. I told somebody, that's our, that's gonna be our bright shining star as far as I'm concerned, concerned. And let me tell you why. People go to Youngsville and Broussard, and the only thing they brag on is the parks. And of course, the new homes that cost three hundred thousand dollars in a flood zone, but I mean, you know?
Ching, I love it.
I mean, we talking state art park for all of our childrens.
Yep.
For all of our children, you know, so I'm, I, you know, I-
And that's why we continue to add things to it, like a playground, like a pavilion, like pickleball, that's, you know, that it will be fair.
But they did do some improvements in Youngsville, so I don't want the people in Youngsville to get mad when they call me and say what I said. They're all doing some improvements over there.
Thirty-something million.
Yeah, they spending some money on their stuff.
Yes, sir.
Now, just echoing what Marlo said, you know, Marlo, we, when we originally started this project, we all scratched our heads and said, man, we ain't got enough money, how am we gonna get off the ground and run? Look who we had now. With, with the, you know, ingenuity and the, the drive this council has and the mayor to be creative with funds, I mean, we way further than I have anticipated. So kudos to this, man. It's just, every dollar you spend is, is making an impact on every child in this community.
That's right.
No doubt.
And, and again, man, I always talk about diversity and unity. We don't talk about that enough. We got, uh, two parks, we got Weston Park, City Park. We used to say the black park and the white park. We don't say that no more. Now, we doing aquatic center at Bank Street.
And we building new parks.
Pepperplex over there.
That's right.
And look, we gonna work on people with the ride issue, how we get our children, and we gonna work on that too. We still need to go after them electric vehicle, because I saw them on the morning, this morning, they're doing electric school buses around the country. So, we need to try to go, see what the federal government talking about with this green energy money, and see how we can get some green energy money for some buses to transport our kids, electric buses. So, nobody can say, oh, our kids can't get where y'all put this stuff at.
Well, we, we do have money in the budget for that. Remember, we put some money aside for vans.
Yeah, yeah, and we have a, a, a van that we might get for free pretty soon. We're already working on a van. Let's get the park built, and we are, but we, we actually have one van that I think the PD is gonna let us borrow it.
Okay.
Uh, because we're not using it, and so, we'll, we'll start with that, but I mean, you know.
We gonna take that police emblem off of there, though, right?
Yeah, we should put a big smiley face.
Yeah.
Freddie, look, I'll probably be off the council, and I got a two thousand three Honda Pilot, third rolls, still clean on the inside. I'll run them from park to park when I'm off the council, you know, if y'all insurance come.
I love that.
Yes, well, what's, what's the timetable? Because, uh, just to be sure, you spend your money before you leave now. I got it. Alright, just gonna make sure.
Funny. Time's ticking.
I'm on it. You won't get it over there. See that, he's already jabbing.
That's very funny. Any other discussion on this item? Uh, then please vote your machines. I like that. Thank you. Item five A.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-two-three-dash-thirty, Amendment Number twenty-nine, and ordinance amending the budget for land purchase and road at Pepperplex and setting for public hearing on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilwoman Didi Johnson Reed, and if you'll indulge me, I'll tell you about this one. We have been trying to find, we know that with all this money and time and energy spent on the Pepperplex, our one Achilles heel is there's no way out to a light on Center Street. Sucrose Drive has no light. We've had issues in the past with this, but nothing compared to what we're gonna have when we succeed with travel ball tournaments, with the community, with all the things we've been talking about tonight. When those things happen, we're really gonna be in a bomb. So, I got a chief here, uh, the PD is, it's not, it's a one-time thing that we have this money, so they would like to utilize it and actually make it pay for itself, and give it to the Pepperplex. So, you got to look at, every event we have, we're gonna have officers on overtime, we're gonna have equipment on the street, we're gonna have officers who could be fighting crime in the street directing traffic, at Horns Way, because they're on a major highway. In addition to that, Public Works will have to come, they, they did it, uh, they're doing it for Saturday for soccer. They have to come and bring the big flashing sign that we paid for a while back, and, and set that up, then they have to come get that. So, the chief and I figure in five years, we would pay for the money that they're willing to put up, and it would last a lot long. But before that happened, I tried to just do the common sense thing and pay for a light. Well, there is no common sense with DOTD. A light is about four hundred thousand, and then you do the study, so you need about five hundred thousand dollars. Called DOTD, said I have a half a million dollars, and I want to put a light up at Sucrose. We have all this energy and all this stuff coming to the Pepperplex, it'll be safe, because I'm not even talking about the safety of our citizens. It can't turn, or that get in a wreck, or that take a chance and dash out into the road with no light, with it turning lane in the middle, somebody's gonna get hit. They said you need a hundred and fifty left turns a day, and you need to have a bunch of accidents, and some fatalities would help. I said, well, I don't have any of that yet, because we hadn't had the problem yet. I'm just trying to be proactive. They said, well, we're not a proactive agency. We work on traffic studies. Without the right traffic study, you can't have a light. Said, so there's no way. I'll pay for the traffic study. Nope, you're not getting a light. So, now I'm like, what do we do? We had some studies that engineers had found ways to get roads out. They went all over the place. They went to St. Jude, they went to Jefferson Island Road, they went in every direction, but they were long, and there's no way we can afford that. So, Richard and I went ride around, and behind Lowe's is Lowe's Retention Pond. Behind Lowe's Retention Pond is twelve acres that's sitting there. The developer who built the Lowe's and developed the Lowe's bought that land, and that's kind of the leftover, that, that's what was left. Well, it has a value, but it's behind a Lowe's and a retention pond, although you can get to it from Queen City. Queen City has a light. So, when we started figuring how we could get across a canal with two double-barrel big box culverts, we could put a limestone road in, and we had all kind of complications. First of all, the limestone road will run in the side of the soccer fields, which is Cleco's main transmission line. So, I had to go to Cleco and say, can I put a road under your mine in your right-of-way? After some back and forth, Cleco gave us permission. So, that was hurdle one. Then I had to figure out if I could put two big double-barrel box culverts, which would not impede any drainage in that drainage canal. Did a little study of that, said, okay, we can do that. Then, I had to start negotiating on the property, but all contingent upon the council saying I could do this. Um, we, we did that, then we had to make some concessions with the landowner, figured that out, and then we had to get a price to put all this together. So, brought a contractor over there, they're gonna have to bid on it, got a price on that, brought an engineer over there, said, I need a cheap price, because it's the Pepperplex, and it's not a major project, it's just a driveway. And then I had to design a set of gates, I just stole Davis' designer, what he did with the other gates, and so, we would have gates, because this would be locked. This, like, the main gate would be locked and open every day. So, when the Pepperplex is open, that's our private drive out and drive in, if you will. But that way, when we have tournaments, I think it fits the bill. Um, we can just about afford it with the PD money. I think I'm gonna need about a hundred thousand dollars from the TIF, but the Pepperplex is in the TIF. So, it's a one-time thing, that we don't have to borrow any money, we can pay for it, um, and I think it's a, it's a good thing. So, that's, that's what I'm asking. So, the property owner, a, and it's not, it's a buy-sell that says it's contingent upon the city council approving this. So, I didn't sign anything that I, I had to make an offer to get the ball rolling. They will retain one little lot. As you're coming in on Queen City, as it's still paved, on the side of Lowe's, there's one lot that actually would be serviced by Queen City. Well, they wanted more money, so I did what I always do, I just started cutting it up, and said, okay, this is all I can afford, so I'll give you that lot. You keep that one lot that can be developed for commercial, I figured we could get some tax dollars off of that, so you sell that lot and put a business there, our gate will be right where the paving stops at Queen City. So, that's how I got the price down to where, you know, I could make all the numbers work by giving them one acre. So, they get a one-acre lot that they can develop commercially. So, that's kind of where we are. I think it's, uh, critical for the long-term operation of the Pepperplex to be able to have that way out, uh, to a light. And you can still go out Sucrose, some people will, but, you know, the experience of coming to our park, that's now a nice park, and we're making it better every time, and then you stuck waiting, i- i- I, I don't know if that's gonna work. So, now I'll open it up for questions, comments. Mr. Broussard? Councilman Broussard?
It's in my district, and, uh, for all the years, fifteen years, I guess, Troy Komo, the board of, uh, Pepperplex, the whole board. That's the number one thing they asked for, a road to get out, like he's talking about, a road on the backside to get out. So, it's been asked by the board. They needed help, so it's really needed. And it's in my district, I'm willing to give up some TIF money to buy that, instead of maybe sidewalks for a while. I think it's more important to have those that bought what you're trying to do. That'd be more important used for the people. But, uh, next year, so we'll try to find some funds for my Center Street sidewalk.
I, I know.
You know, but I hope you appreciate, and I'm backing you on that a hundred percent. It's been needed for a lot of years, this road you're talking about. And I'm surprised it's so simple that you have it, where we can go get it.
It wasn't simple to find it. Uh, it just happened to work, I think. Yes, sir. You hit your hand.
Thank you. Uh, I think it's a no-brainer, because we built, we've been talking about the Pepperplex all, all night long, and we're building a state-of-the-art facility. Why have one way in and one way out? That's a disaster. So, the plan that you're trying to put forward, to have that accessway to going, going to a light, I appreciate the PD for such a generous offer, uh, because it is gonna take away from their time, if they have to put officers there.
Yeah.
Um, and we, if you look at the math, you do the math, you span it out over five years, pretty much gonna pay it for itself. So, I think it's a no-brainer, that's my opinion, and that's, that's the way I see it, so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so first, let me say that I agree, we need a road there. It's, I've been on Center Street when there's been tournaments going on and people trying to leave, it's a nightmare. However, I must say that, um, I'm probably not in favor of taking it from the police budget, um, and here's why. Because I have constituents calling me all the time about the uptick of crime, and we know we're not one hundred percent staffed, and people are like calling me because they're like, you know, what's going on? What are you guys gonna do? I got people, kids, you know, putting guns in my yard and, and making me feel unsafe. And to, to me, we should find another place to take that money, because we need to start recruiting more officers. I'd rather see us use that money to go and get a recruiter who knows how to pull in police, give them signing bonus, whatever that looks like. Although, so my issue is not with the road. I agree one hundred percent with the road. My issue is the source of the money.
Okay.
That's what my issue is with it.
Alright.
Okay.
Chief, you wanna come up and help me? First of all, tell us like where we got it and what we doing, you know?
Yeah, well, o- obviously, this, and absolutely, it's a public safety issue when it comes to, uh, giving people an outlet where a light is. When you're talking about crossing over four-lane highways with a center, with a center, uh, spot, uh, dangerous to get across without someone police-wise to, to direct traffic. That directing traffic comes at a cost, because as Richard and his team, uh, start bringing in more tournaments and those types of things, start requiring more and more police, police to be there to take away. Uh, with the mayor's talking about, with the one-time monies, um, you're right, you brought up a point of, uh, manpower, uh, some vacancies that our department has had over this past year, that allowed us to have the extra monies to be able to do this. What we looked at, and what I looked at budgetarily, is what it would cost me along those next years of trying to cover that intersection that's not lighted, if we didn't have an outlet to go to that red light, it would cost me more money in years to come. You know, because we are in, and I'm glad you brought up recruiting too, because we're in the process of putting together a recruiting pack that we're gonna go to SLCC and a few other places, that we're, we're gonna make some more efforts to, to recruit. But this is a problem that every police department and sheriff's department is dealing with nationwide for that matter, not just locally. But, uh, we have the opportunity now, where we've had the vacancies this past year, the monies is available to do, where I think it's gonna save us long-term. What the mayor's projecting is correct. Hundred thousand dollars, probably conservative, when you're talking about overtime hours on the amount of days that we need it, and hours we need to cover the intersection that's not lighted. So, it, it, it's gonna, it's gonna give us more access to funds in the future, not taken away from us. It's gonna help us long-term.
And in the budget that you don't know about, in this coming budget, we are looking at some ideas that we have to, and maybe increase the pay a little bit more, because we do see, I mean, budget's coming in a week, two weeks. We do see that other departments much smaller than us have raised their pay. So, that is something else that we're looking at in new budget, with a recruiting package and some increases that we think will help us retain our people.
A lot of people especially wanting to get into, to law enforcement itself, who's offering the shiny new package? You know, who's paying the best, who has the best equipment, on and on. Now, our equipment is state-of-the-art. I mean, we, we can't go wrong with what we've done.
We're only five years old, and we've, we made some.
Done a lot. And, you know, with the pay wise, is that there's a lot of sheriffs and chiefs and other places, and mayors that have hit the panic button, and they've already gone up. In fact, Lafayette's about to go up again. So, we can't find ourselves, like the mayor and I discussed over the past month, we can't find ourselves behind the pack. And, and when I talk about that, it's other municipalities and sheriff's offices that have raised the pay so much that it leaves us so far behind. Because what's gonna happen is, is in the next two or three years, they're gonna hit that panic button again, because recruiting is getting low, and all of a sudden, we're twice behind that pack of agencies that have went up. So, if you find yourself, you gotta be within that pack of agencies that pay this, this average.
Right.
And we want to stay within there, and that's what we're working on, the mayor and I are working on currently.
And I guess I wanted you to know, and the council to know, as well as the community, that we're not, we're cognizant of the fact that a lot of people don't want to be cops, and that we need to, you know, anymore, we need to retain the cops we have, the officers that we have, and we do need to put some things together for, we're not, we're not blind-eyed to that, we need to try to stay ahead of the curve.
Agreed, and I guess, um, for everything you just said, that's why I feel like I wouldn't take the money from your budget, I'd take it from somewhere else. And again, I, one hundred percent behind the road. I think it's a great idea, because, like I said, I've been in that traffic, and I'm like, oh, my God, they had something at the Pepperplex tonight. And now I'm gonna be sitting here for thirty minutes, but I just feel like, because of, you know, the, the feedback I'm getting from my constituents, we should find a different place to, a different source of money, and you need your money to go after these officers and signing, but whatever that looks like. That's all I'm saying.
Look, a, a, as, as your police chief, I can appreciate that. You know, a fight for us to hold on to what we have, in a sense of financially, i- is, I mean, I, I can't find a better day where I got a councilperson in the council that, that supports that for my department. You know, but with that said, we're towards the end of a budget year where we have the finances available because of our vacancies, and because of the things that we, because we still run our budget as we have those employees.
Right.
So, we don't just say that, well, during the course of these months, we had these vacancies, so let's go spend it.
No, I know.
Hold on to that, because we also have to cover overtime and some other stuff that's coming into play. So, you know, we've been, I guess, the, the easy way to say, we've been fiscally responsible with your monies, with the, with the public's monies, to make sure that we had that towards going towards the end of the year if we needed it. And, uh, and it, it's here, and, and I, I think it, not think, I know that long-term, because the mayor and I kind of have envisioned, uh, uh, over the past five years together, where we don't just think of today, because if you start doing that, you forget about tomorrow and on. And what I have to look at is that if we don't give this access point where he has a plan to, to give an outlet to get a light, now I gotta start figuring, who do I assign, and how many do I assign, and how many days, and start figuring out what that's gonna cost us budgetarily in years to come. And that's where it starts adding up.
Agreed.
And that's where we could save that. But I can appreciate it, and I thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
So, couple, couple, couple things, um, first of all, you know, the road issue, when, when you talk to people and kids and families that are using the facility currently, i- it never amazed me that every time you say, man, what about the traffic? What about the road? So, it, it's a problem that's created by what we've created out there, and, and it's, it's concurrent amongst all the people that use it. So, obviously, when you create something of goodwill that creates equality life, there comes problems with it, right? And I think we've created a public safety problem with the traffic, and America, and the police chief can agree with that.
Not yet, but we will.
We will, you know, so that traffic is a public safety. So, I think, you know, with the investment from the PD department, and what we're doing, we're gonna eliminate that, that public safety problem and make it safer for our parents and kids, and I think it's a great investment. And I think that, uh, we should move forward on this and, and, and rely on it as, as something that could, you know, be detrimental to our families. I'm good.
Councilman Broussard, get your hand up, and.
Property along that road, future taxes, future businesses coming in, you know, it'd be empty lot, empty. That you could promote businesses down that road on each side, you know? I don't know if that would, uh.
It's, well, we'll be able to promote the, the one acre that they're keeping, definitely, okay? On the other side, when you come on Sucrose, they have property for sale there, definitely. The rest of the road is really a private drive. In other words, it only is, it's twenty feet wide, but it's only wide enough to go down the right-of-way that Cleco was letting us cross the ditch and get out. But it will promote, what we're gonna end up having is on each end, okay? Sucrose and on Queen City, on each end, the private property will become valuable.
Yep, you put a road, something's gonna open up, you know, bring taxes back.
But I just don't want you to think along the whole road, because some of it is just a draw.
It's been asked, it's been asked for twenty years or more, that road we talking about. So, they're so excited about trying to get out of there. It's been there, because I've been the city councilman all them years.
Yeah, you and me both.
And that's the first thing Troy will tell you, I want the dang road for the kids, for the people. You know, so give another outlet. I'm, I'm all for it, and I'm all supporting the police too, you know, much we can do.
Think it'll save a lot of, uh, extra officers, maybe a lot of go out the light, and you won't have to have so long being at, and that's another thing on Almadon. Right by Sonic, I fought to get that darn turning light, y'all seeing it right now?
That's true, that's true.
If you don't have enough people turning, and they had one for thirty years right there, left turn and right turn. But Kathy Carr has a left turn and right turn, and nobody turning in it for half a year. How they live by what they telling you, Mr. Mayor? You know, that's the thing, they say you gotta have so many people turning. Uh-uh, there's nobody, they got their left and right turn over there. But we lost ours when they put a new pole up.
Yes, sir.
Man, I fought tooth and nail for the people coming in the College Park. Just wanna let the people know, I fought for you, but you heard it from the mayor. Can't fight the government.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Man, you know, uh, I just can't think about this national movement that was a couple of years after the pandemic, and, uh, you know, that's what I like about these meetings when we talking, is you got the floor, because if, if they take sound bites, they might take me wrong. You know, there's a national movement talking about defunding police departments, defunding them. And I'm totally against defunding police departments, because we need police more than ever. We need good police more than ever. Obviously, they are hard to find. And the way I look at this budgetary money that was left over, is the police department saying, because if we're gonna, the people, they had some people on the side of the defunding the police, they had some people on the side of that, that was on a good, they said, well, we don't want to defund them, we want to. said, well, we don't want to defund them. We want to defund them and put them into services for our children, for our youth, mental health, and all of these things to make our society better. And that's what we doing. That's what I see here. I see us completing a project that we started together and we found a place to get the money, you know? And, and, and Chief, you know, I, I won't be on the front line saying defund the police, but I look at it as you guys giving up some funds to do what everybody's been fussing about. Take money from the police. They got too much. They got buildings. They got nightclub. They got brass knuckles. They got all kinds of stuff. They don't need all of that. Take some of that money from that and give it to the kids. And that's what we're doing today. You know, so, man, you, you guys put y'all here together and look, let's complete some. Look, I'm gonna procrastinate. I got, I tell people, I stopped telling people I got three rent houses. I say I got three houses because ain't nobody renting them because I ain't never started working on them. But this council together, we're going to complete some stuff. And, you know, that seems like another piece to the puzzle to complete a, you know, like I said, a bright sign and start that's going to say people come back and, and come enjoy New Iberia. Not to mention, that place is going to keep some, it's going to be some prevention happening. I, I, I own a barber shop. I think everybody know that. And I got parents that come to my barber shop. Look, I'm talking about state-of-the-art facilities, state-of-the-art parents that come to the, and looking for somewhere to keep their kids in Louisiana, in New Iberia. And that's, that's who I'm always fighting for, those people, you know? You know, if you don't want nothing, you can't make nobody want something. You can't make nobody want something. But for those people that want something and want to be here, that's what I'm fighting for. Let's give it to them. So let's finish the job with, by any means necessary. And, you know, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
And if I could go further on that, you know, a big part of my career coming up was for over 25 years, I coached Little League sports, you know, and that not only got to know these kids that grew up to be parents themselves, unutilized parents and the grandparents. And that's a part of what we're encouraging our department. We have offices that are partnering with Boys and Girls Club and doing some things in there. I encourage our officers to take on a coaching role, a mentor role. That's what it is. A coaching role is a mentor role, especially in Little League sports. And that's how you bridge that gap with the, those young children in grade school growing up to be high schoolers and on, to start bridging that gap with the violence and have that, that connection between law enforcement and the kids. So what we're encouraging, it was a big part of my career. And, you know, I still, of course, I did a lot of that when I was in St. Martinville, but still to today, still today, see kids that are a lot older than I think I am sometimes that I coached when they were, they were young and, because I started coaching when I was young. And, you know, them having kids of their own and getting to meet their kids, it's, it's, it wasn't police officer, it was coach. And that's, that's what bridges the gap. So that's why I always, before, and when the mayor talked to me about being able to do this, this is a part of a park program. This is what our, that's what our police is. That's, that's what we are. We're here to serve.
I still got the floor. Just, you do, just to add to that, I, I've been around, I say this to people, but I don't say it too loud. I've been around politics all my life. Grandfather was a city councilman, Peggy was a city councilman. Before the police department, I remember fights between the police department and the city council over money.
Yeah.
And, and now we giving up money from one department to the other to make the city better as a whole. So I see that. I see, you know, a, a bright future, the bright future that my family was talking about when they served in this seat. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to also say thank you for finding the funding for this because we play with Evangeline Little League, and it's kind of small right now, and the traffic is really bad whenever the games are letting out. So it'll be really nice to have that relief with an extra outlet. And they do normally have the police there trying to direct traffic. And so it'll be nice to be able to have a traffic light since DLT doesn't want to help us out with that. But it's needed because once we start to increase the numbers at Evangeline Little League, which is, I see that happening for next season, that they're going to have a lot more kids wanting to play at the new fields. And then with the tournaments coming, it's going to really bring a lot of traffic to our town. So I think it's much needed. I'm glad we just have the funding available. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilman Dede Johnson-Reed can add to the amendment, to add to it that we have an IOU to the police department of half a million dollars. And then everybody could be covered. I'm just picking on you, but-
No, I mean, I just, again, I am all for the road.
I know you are. I know you are.
I really think it's a great idea and it's desperately needed. I just feel like we have, we got, we have some crime issues, and I wish we'd use that money to go and recruit some officers. We can find that money somewhere else.
Well, new budget's coming, and I guess that was my point. New budget's coming in two months, you know, November 1. We actually do it in October. But, you know, let's look at our finances, and if, if there's a way, we can, I mean, we do have money. We do build up money. We are very blessed that we have new businesses and our taxes are building up. So while the chief's here, you know, it's not a blank check, but, you know, I, I do see that as things that go, and you got one vote for half a million dollars, okay? You gotta work on the rest of them. But when we need something, I, I, and something that can, as important as law enforcement is, as important as the issues that we have in our community, I know that the chief, in his bag of tricks, if he sees anything that we can do to fight some of these issues, if he sees anything that any, I go to those administration meetings every week. If there's anything that we can see that we can actually further address our serious crime issues, believe me, we'll come running. And, and that money, you know, what happens every year, some money goes back from almost every department to the general fund or to the sales tax fund where it came from.
Right.
So those things happen, but, you know, I don't want you to think the doors closed that, or the community to think that if the PD came up with something, we would do without.
And real quick, if we could, don't think that our recruiting efforts are not a nil at this point. We've hired four new officers in the past two months.
Two months.
It just takes time to get them road-ready. Because we have a program where we have a four-phase field training program and then the academy. So you're looking at nine months before that office is able to turn a steering wheel on their own.
No, I, I absolutely-
So it just takes a little time. But we, we have hired four officers over the past couple of months.
I understand completely. I just, you know, I'm, I represent constituents who are dealing with a lot of crime. And they call me because they're worried about the fact that they, they feel, I don't even know if this is true, because again, I can't prove it, but they feel like there is not enough police presence in our community. So when they say that to me, and I get phone calls about this, then it's hard for me to say, oh, yeah, let's, even for the kids, and don't get me wrong. I'm all about it. I've been a softball coach, you'd name it, everything. It's hard for me to say, take away from the police budget, because I feel like we can take it from somewhere else. I'd rather us take it from another project than to take it from the police budget. That, that's my only issue with it because of the fact that I represent constituents who are unhappy with what they believe is the level of crime in their community, in our community.
And I can tell you that the mayor knows, I have a long memory, and I know that Councilman Reed is on our side when it comes time for that next vote. So I appreciate it.
That's it.
And also-
Absolutely. And, and Mayor, to, to piggyback on Councilwoman Reed, you, you sound like you said, if, if, if something was to come up where we needed $500,000, the same place that we can get it from now, we can go get it from then, right?
Yeah. In other words, that, that's exactly right. If, if, we're going to watch our money, we're going to be fiscal responsible, but if the sales tax fund has a half a million dollars extra in it, or money that's not committed, okay? Or the general fund has money that's not committed, and we have a need for the police department that can make a difference in this community, you bet I'll be the first one to come over here with that and say, you know, here's what we can do. Here's where it could make a difference.
Okay.
And a cheap, another cheap way to bring crime down is to, if you see some, if you see something, say something. Start telling on your neighbor child who hiding that gun behind your car and hiding that stolen car behind your house. Start doing that. If you see something, say something. If they, if we would do that, more than we complaining to the council people, because they called me about police work, and I tell them I'm not a police officer. I'm so sorry, but I can point you in the right direction. That's what I do.
I understand. I guess in some ways, you're kind of making my, no, no.
I'm not saying to, to you. I'm saying-
No, I know, I know. But in some ways, you're kind of making my point. Let's not just, let's just get out the general fund, you know? Let's take that money and go use it to get a recruiter to go and get us some police officers. That's all I'm saying. Because I am on board with doing this. I just feel like it's hard for me to say, take it out of the police budget when my constituents don't agree.
I understand.
They wouldn't agree if they knew.
I understand. And part of it is my police depart, the way I look at it is a little different. Part of it is our police department being community police, doing something for kids that you never see, doing something and saying, we could go buy some more gizmos or we could do some more stuff, but we kind of scrimped and saved and some of this fell in our lap this year, and we would like to invest it in our children. And that's, doesn't happen often. The PD doesn't get, you know, people see a policeman on the worst days of their life. I kind of had to learn that when I came, you know, when we built a police department. Usually when people interact with our police department, they're having a good day. So any opportunity to say that our police and our police money and our policemen and our chief on down to our patrolman are behind doing something that's positive, I really kind of relish that because it doesn't happen that often. Normally, like I said, it, it's the opposite. So part of me was kind of proud that this was happening because it does show what we preach, what the chief and I built the department on, which we had a panel that interviewed every employee, which is why we've had to fire some and discipline some and, you know, things. It's been a ride. I, I'm not gonna lie. But to keep those standards and to build something and maintain something that is community-oriented, I thought this kind of fit with the, what we're trying to do. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I just want to say, I'm glad you're back. You're looking good. It's good to have you back. It really is. And I think that, you know, you are doing what you think is right for our city, for our kids, in helping move New Iberia forward. And I really commend you for that. And the mayor also. So I'm behind this because I know if there was a need for the police department, we would take care of it. We really would. So we have a need and you taking care of it. And one, it, it goes back and forth, and thank you.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Fabi?
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2023-20, an ordinance ratifying the mayor's signature on a purchase agreement for a parcel of property located adjacent to the New Iberia Pepperplex and further authorizing the mayor to continue with the purchase of said property and execute any and all documentation in connection therewith and setting for public hearing on September 19th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, second by, did you second?
Yes.
Rep. Tumari Gonsal. Is there any discussion on this? This is, you know, part of the-
This is for the property, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any discussion? We kind of already did.
Yeah.
No, well, I mean, I gotta ask, you know, I gotta ask. Okay. Good. Within, sir.
So just the same pot of money is being used to purchase the property, correct?
Yes. The property's being purchased from the money from the PD, the improvements are the rest of the balance of the money from the PD, and then a little bit from the tip.
That's good.
Okay. No discussion, and then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five C.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2023-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an undergovernmental agreement for shared sewer services by and between the city of New Iberia and Sewerage District Number One of Iberia Parish and setting for public hearing on September 19th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Move.
Motion by Rep. Tumari Gonsal and a second by, I don't know who, who was the second. I was-
Someone over there said it first.
Okay. Councilwoman Dede Johnson-Reed. Okay. I know this is goofy, but I need to run them off to get my notes.
Okay.
I just, I mean, this is one we're going to have questions on and-
Can we take a bathroom break?
Everybody's getting up, evidently.
Jeff, I did read this in front to back.
What's that?
Read this in front to back to soar.
And we're still going back and forth.
Oh, man, I say, geez.
Everybody left?
It's a complicated thing.
They're taking a bathroom break.
Oh, they two of them left.
Oh, okay. Dang, I should have taken one of those too, I guess.
Me too.
You have time.
You do have time.
Anybody need another water?
No, that would cause more of a problem.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'll be right back.
Oh, we are? Okay.
I mean, unless there's a boat to recess, I guess, I don't know.
We're good. We're good.
No, we're good.
We'll give you viewers a break. They can go get some water too.
I should have gone. I don't want. I should have gone too. Oh, I wasn't paying attention though, so sorry. He's back. How many meetings you have left?
Uh, let's see.
We have like six or seven.
I could put me on the spot.
I think seven. Oh, okay. We got time.
We got one more chance to wear my jacket. Cat daddy.
Yes. We definitely gonna have a, a repass afterwards.
Come back around.
For, after, for Christmas.
Okay.
To say goodbye to some, one of us. And some of us, really.
Yeah.
Who's some?
No one.
Just him right now.
Just him.
Yeah. Like something's changing at the end of the year that no one told me about?
Yeah, we still going till next year.
Yeah, yeah. About a year left. Put some more licks in. Get some more done.
Year and three months.
I think David left.
No, he didn't.
No, he went to the restroom.
Yeah, he's, uh, I guess too.
I hear him talking.
Yeah.
He's back. You gotta wait on Brooke now.
Oh, man. He's the only one everybody calls Mister.
I know, I know. I always missed.
Mmm, it's good though. It's good. I loved it.
You didn't catch on for a minute or two.
No.
You didn't clap for me?
All right, back in session. All right, this item started because we realized that the parish was over the flow limit. They have two limits on our contract. One is the capacity and the other is the flow limit. I've got Vince and Craig here to answer questions. So we embarked on a new contract. The other item, which is even more important, is they are attracting new businesses. And we told them 18 months ago now that they were going to have a problem because they were selling something that was going to come to an end. How are you going to sell a new facility and have them come in? And now we have one, but we told them long before this, it had nothing to do with the first solar deal, that you're going to end up selling something, and then those people are going to come in and they're going to have sewer for a year. And then they're not going to have a contract. And lo and behold, you know, first solar takes two years to build. There's only a couple years left in the contract. So when they're kicking off, they don't really have a, a contract anymore. So those are the two reasons that a long time ago, Jeff and I went to some meetings, sent some emails, had a couple of meetings, had a Zoom call or two, and just said, you know, we need to renegotiate this. This is something that we need to do, and we need to do another 15-year agreement. So you know what you're selling, and I know what checks I got to cash that you're writing. Because that's been the, the biggest rub is that, you know, we, we have no clue what they're promising people or what's coming down the pike. And yet, we're responsible, we're also responsible at the end of the pipe for the, the, you know, the results, to keep it within compliance. It's wearing, tearing our plant. It's, it's the whole nine yards. In other words, it comes to us and then we're in charge. So we've had a couple of Zoom calls with the parish. We had one Friday. We presented them with this exact information that's in front of you and said, you know, here's our new deal. So the next step is always, you, the council grants me permission to keep negotiating and to work on this. I don't know how much negotiation there really is because these prices came from our auditors. And we got them involved to say, you know, where do we need to be? There is a state statute that says a utility can't lose money. Also, there's an ordinance when we built the new sewer plant, around the same time we passed some ordinances, and it says that we have to, can't operate at a loss. and it says that we have to, can't operate at a loss. So, I'm gonna open it up for discussion and questions, but that's what we're here to do, is to let Jeff and I continue our work with your blessing to get a new contract. We want to see the parish grow. The parish grows, the city grows. This is not like, you know, we pointed it out long before we had this deal that is here now. But we all succeed, if we all succeed. But this is a part of it that, you know, you could come to a point that we would have to say, without a new agreement, we can't, you can't go sell anymore. You can't write any more checks because we can't cash them. So, that's kind of where we are. So, I'm gonna open it up, get some input. Mike always do. Yes, sir? Oh, oh, I thought you had your hand up. Yes, ma'am. Let's give me a shot, bro.
So, just to be, make sure I understand what I read. Are these the new, this is the new rates? Or are these the current rates?
No, these are our new rates. This is what we are presenting to them.
Okay, and, and how does that compare to what our citizens are paying for sewer?
Actually, as a, it's kind of neat. The, we didn't do it like that, but the $5.53 per gallon, when you look at what our citizens are paying, it's right around the same thing. When I questioned our auditors, they said, well, yeah, because that's what it costs for you to treat. In other words, you should be the same. That's what it costs for you to treat that amount of sewer and come out at least close. Because we still don't, you know that our sewer system still, no one wants to hear that, but our sewer system still operates at a loss.
Right.
But where we are, it's much closer to where we need to be. So, after this was all backfigured and looked at and looked at by, you know, our engineers, looked at by the auditors, it's very close to what our citizens pay.
Okay, because, I mean, our citizens taxed out as built the plant, so the parish ought to be paying more than, at least even to what the citizens are paying. They shouldn't have to pay for more, and the parish is getting the same use of it. That's just my take on it. So, this is, these are the new rates.
Yes.
This is not, the old rates, they are paying less than our citizens. So, that's why, another reason why we're renegotiating this.
Well, we're renegotiating because the time's gonna run out and they're not gonna be able to have any more business. That was the paramount issue. But it is also an issue. They basically were given fifteen years ago a huge discount.
Yes.
And that's fallen, you know, but that, that's over now. I mean, we, and we are spending millions. Remember, in our budget, we approved 12 million, 11.9, 12 million last, this past year, and we're in the process of spending it.
Right.
You know, so that investment has to be calculated. There is a clause in here that they could need more overall capacity. When they need more, we don't know when. In other words, we can accomplish the First Solar, which is the big animal on the table. We can, we can accomplish that one. If those ancillary businesses come that do business with First Solar, if some of these other deals come, you know, we would have to basically add a sale, add an addition to the plan for the parish.
So, that was my next question.
I figured it was.
Yeah.
I, I can't tell you when that's gonna be.
Right.
And I can't give you the cost. I mean, concrete's going from a hundred dollars a yard to two hundred dollars a yard. You look at every aspect of it. So, what we have in here, I'm paraphrasing, we have in here that at the time, they would need the increased capacity. We would calculate the engineering costs, the construction costs, the finance costs because we'd have to borrow money to do it. We would calculate all of that, and then that's how we would base what the new rate would be.
Okay.
But I can't do it now because, you know, we don't know when that would be, you know? It may be never, it may be two years from now, I just, or ten years from now, who knows?
Okay, that was my next question.
Okay, yes, sir?
Okay, so right now, right now, the question I have is, why are we more focused on the Acadian Airport area? Is that we're more focused on that, that number there, or?
No, we're really focused, if you look-
On the entire group, entire group as a whole, right?
Yeah, it's entire contract as a whole because not every new addition or every new quantity of sewer that's gonna come to us is gonna be at the airport. Those big projects at hand are at the airport, but our sewer comes from, and Vince can explain that better than I can, but I mean, it comes from all over. But the airport is certainly a concern, but the overall whole picture needs to be addressed.
Okay, oh, my next comment is, I know all y'all are looking at me up here, you're giving me these eyes when we're talking about dealing with the parish. But I believe what's fair is fair. I mean, that's how I've always felt. No, we're not, we're not a consolidated government, but at the same time, we need to work together.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's, that's my take. So, yeah, I just wanted to let that be known. Keep giving me those eyes up here.
I can't, can't agree more, I mean, we're all in this together.
That's it, that's all I have to say right now on that.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, Dustin, you can't use the C word, remember that.
No, there is no-
There's no C word, right?
Well, I, you know, you know where I stand on that. Letting that out.
No, I actually, yeah. Like I told Jeff, I read it front to back, and I thought that, that what I see in the parameters that are written that the city is well protected currently, I know there's be some adjustments, you know, like the CPI, in case cost goes up. I like the construction-
Which we have.
That's what we have now. I like the construction addition, what we have. I talked to Freddie, the auditors proposed the rates. I do like, you know, if they exceed that $2 million per day, I do like the fines that go along with that. So, I think-
Two million, two hundred.
Two million, two hundred. So, I do like the parameters. I think we're well protected as we're going into it. I think the mayor's gonna negotiate on the behalf of the city and make it a, you know, really, really sound, sound contract. You know, if somebody wants to grow, they gotta pay. I mean, you can't, you can't grow and not pay, you know, pay for sewers because the first thing that should be addressed when you're entertaining new businesses, can you flush? And if you can't flush, if you can't flush, you can't, you can't come. So, I think, you know, with this opportunity to pass again, they will be able to flush and, and be able to grow there as well as we'll be able to grow as well. And you made, you made that statement, you know? We can grow as well with the increased capacity. So, I think we got two good guys working, and I'm proud of them, of what we put together and what the mayor put together. I think it's solid, it really is.
Yes, sir?
Is there any possibility the parish gonna build their own facility?
I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know that they, you know, that's even an option. Talking to the parish president, that, that's, that has never come up in our talks. I do know that at the airport, there are some FAA requirements and bird requirement restrictions. And I know that in the past, when I was the mayor pro temp and we entered into this first agreement, the parish had looked at doing something themselves, and the FAA wouldn't allow them. So, there are some areas, like the airport, they're not, probably not gonna be able to do that. Whether they would build a sewer plant somewhere else, that's totally up to them. But that hasn't been on the table, I mean.
So, we are collecting enough money for in the future, if they don't build a plant, we have to continue taking on there more and more businesses come in.
It's pay per, that's a good question, but it's pay per the gallon.
So, we collecting enough to add on later on?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm making sure of that.
No, no, we good. And you see, I mean, if the parish didn't do this, let's face facts, we'd never need to add on to our plant. Our plant can handle, the city has, you know, I wanna annex, and, and, you know, I love to annex all the way to, you know, wherever I can. But that's not reasonable, that's not gonna happen. We can only annex now what's contiguous to the city. So, they only let you take it in small bites. You can't do like Bruce Art and Youngsville used to do and put a stakeout three miles away and annex it by the highway. They don't let you do that, that's illegal to do that. You can't do that anymore, or I would have done it. So, you know, we're not gonna grow in some capacity that we would actually use much more sewer than what our plant is capable of, at least not in the foreseeable future. But the parish needs it because they have, you know, acres and acres and miles and miles that they can grow and, and good potential, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing to live where, you know, we have potential of businesses coming and new jobs and new taxes. But yes, sir, it's all by the gallon, and that's why it's pay at the pump, it's coin operated. So, you know, we, as they use it, they pay. Yes, ma'am?
I was kind of thinking along the lines of Mr. Bruce Art as well, but if they, they're not gonna build their own facility, maybe they could pay for the upgrades to our facility if needed.
Well, that's, we are running this like a utility. That's why the prices are going up. In other words, when Cleco adds, when you put new businesses and Cleco comes in with new power lines and main transmission lines, they don't charge you anything, it's on your bill. It's the same thing we're doing here. These rates are going up to cover us for the money we're spending.
Okay, so that'll accommodate-
In other words, they're not gonna come and say, here's, here's, here's a million dollars, fix me up. That's not, they're gonna pay on these rates because we're bonding the money out, we're finding the money in-house. You know, the 12 million, look at the 12 million. We took millions of dollars from the sales tax fund. We did get five million from the state, but we're spending 12. We look at this year's budget, we probably have another 10 million dollars in projects. So, everything that we're spending and doing as the system as a whole, we are finally looking at it like what we should be, that it is our utility. So, we invest the money, it's not fair, you know, if you build a new subdivision, you know, you don't write a big check to Cleco. So, that's how it's covered.
Okay.
Because there were some talks early on, hey, what if we just give you a check? But that, that won't work, that's not, you know, because we have all the risk, we have all the overhead, we have all the manpower, we have all of the-
And reliability.
And reliability, yeah. At the end of the day, when, you know, DQ says your numbers aren't right, it's coming to us. Yes, sir?
The, they're also obligated to give us their wastewater.
Yes.
So, in the contract, they have to give it to us because we're spending money counting on having to deal with it. You know, so they can't divert it. I don't think, I haven't heard talk about a plant, a parish plant.
I haven't at all.
I just think the geography's tough, you know, because we're, we're in the middle of the parish, and they have all these outlawing areas. And wherever they build it, they're gonna have to move the stuff, which is really expensive to do. So, I, I'm not hearing that. I don't think the parish was shocked by this, but, you know, we'll have to see.
Yep, yep. I think you had, did, did you speak already?
Yeah, I asked a question already.
Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am?
I wanted to say that several municipalities around our state, the, the number one reason why they're in bankruptcy or in the state's taking over is because of their utilities. They're not charging enough to take care of and upgrade, you know, of their utilities that they offer. So, this is the one that our city does own. The rest are, you know, we, other, other companies take care of those. So, we definitely need to take care of this, you know, raise the rates as needed and look out in the future for those upgrades. Otherwise, you know, we'll be in the hole like some other places, and that's not a good place to be.
No, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, so I was just gonna ask, do we have enough land around the current sewer system, the one that's on 14, that if we had to add another cell, we have ample space?
Unless we keep adding to the Pepperplex, no, I'm picking, yes. We have a hundred and something acres out there, okay? With your permission, we're buying the 12 more that will be a road, but there's a little piece of ground we'd have there, too, for the Pepperplex. So, no, we have plenty of property, we have a big area fenced in, that's all been in the plan of where we could add another cell. So, we're fine with that. And if we had to, we already, we are not going to encroach anymore in that, that space, just in case, you know, then we really need it, or the future, you know, somebody, mayor's down the road.
So, exactly. And what about for the other wastewater plants? Do we have like space that if we needed to grow them because that side of the town was, or parish was growing? Could we grow any of those?
We have tons of pump stations and tons of, you know, I don't know how much blank property we have in other areas.
Okay.
But, I mean, we're doing flow rerouting, we're bringing more and more to the new plant, which we is 20 years old. But we do have half of the Cotton Street plant that does service, you know, an area of the city as well. So, between the two, I think we'll never grow past needing.
Well, let's hope that that's wrong.
I mean, let's say down the road, you know, this is the, I'm the 27th mayor, you know, let's hope down the road they do, but it won't be us.
All right, just checking.
No, thank you. Anybody else? Bench, wanna come up? Craig, you wanna come up? That's about right. Okay, so we good?
Oh, yeah.
Everything you heard is good?
Absolutely.
Vince did a lot of work on this.
He did, that's why I wanted to give him the opportunity because, and Craig's learning, he's there, right there, but, okay. You know, you only have, what, three weeks left?
That's right.
I mean, you know, you're just trying to skate, bro?
They count down way faster than expected.
Yeah, that was my question, when is your last day? So, three weeks?
End of the month, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll, he'll make the next meeting, and that'll be it.
Yeah, so, no, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. You read it, I don't, you know, if you have any questions, it's just pretty straightforward. It brings, brings them up to an even playing field where we are. It was a discounted rate way back in the day. You know, we're not making a whole bunch of money off, off of them. We're, we're basically breaking even with, with these values, right?
With the ones that we have here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, there's no chance that they're gonna ever get us to a point where we're breaking even on sewer altogether, like? So, because we're, we're operating at a loss, correct? Sort of?
You know, we have operating loss every year, pretty much, you know, so I would say yes, you know, we're operating at somewhat of a loss. But it's covered by, uh, our fund balance, you know, for now, but at some point, there's the cliff, you know? We're trying to stop that.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to see, can the parish get it, with these new rates, would it get us to a point where we're not operating at a loss?
Oh, I would, I would, yeah, I mean, our loss probably every year, uh, is about two or three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this increase, this increase, um, is, is gonna generate about an extra two hundred thousand.
That, that's a good point because I don't want people to think that we're generating all of this money. In other words, all this new deal with all this talk and prices at an increase, it's gonna bring in about two hundred thousand dollars more. So it's really not that.
The gap.
Yeah, it, it does help us close a gap, but on the flip side, it's not this huge amount of money. I have no clue what a one point one billion dollar project does for our parish, but it's gotta do a lot. Uh, and that's just one. So I feel that we, that, that by itself shows that we, we weren't being greedy. We're just trying to get our cost, um, that it's only gonna bring in two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Right.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Glad I came up.
That's it. Any other questions or comments? Then.
Thank you, Bench.
Just me.
Then I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Okay, where we at? Five D.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an act of donation by and between the City of New Iberia and Five K Property Management LLC for the donation of a parcel of property to the city in the Little Brooklyn neighborhood and setting for public hearing on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Dee Johnson Reed and I think it was Councilman Bruce Art. Great, this is the project that would be a new park on Henry Street. And we will accept a donation from the family. There was some back and forth under design. I think we got that straight. Um, they also are putting the money up to demo the building, which is awesome because that's the only way we could take it. So this would, uh, let me, we have the money to do the project through Capital Atlet. So this would allow us, you know, the next step, which is accept the donation, accept the money, get the building torn down. And then our architects have released, uh, the preliminary design of the park has been done. Uh, it was sent to the neighborhood association as well as kind of the property owner, uh, for their approval. I think what I got back was not, uh, they had a few little changes. I think our design professionals are working on that right now, but nothing that was insurmountable. It was not, uh, uh, as, as, you know, it could have been. I, I was a little hesitant thinking they were gonna try to redo everything. And we only have so much money, but they didn't. It, it's, I think it's very reasonable.
Excellent.
Questions, comments?
I make a comment. Uh, the majority, I'd say, of the neighborhood wants it done. I think this is something that we need to do. Uh, especially with everything that's been going on in Little Brooklyn to enhance and improve the quality in Little Brooklyn. So I know there's some naysayers, I'm not gonna name names, but I think it needs to be done to keep, keep moving forward in that, that neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, they have good momentum and, and, you know, this helps them.
Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Then if there's nothing further, please vote your machines. Alright, now my favorite part of the meeting, discussion hour. Madam Clerk.
Discussion regarding attendance of potential appointees to city boards and commissions, attendance at New Iberia City Council meetings.
Okay, this, as you know, became an issue at the last meeting. And so we have to decide, we don't have to decide anything, we have to discuss it, okay? But we need to decide a, a long-term solution. Is this gonna be something we pass as a, as a rule? Is this something that is just a, uh, unspoken rule? But it kinda came up last time that it, we actually deferred something twice. So I just wanted to, well, no, we deferred it and then we passed it the second time with, with much discussion. So I thought we should put on the agenda and talk about if this was going to be added to, you know, the rules that we have or if it was just gonna stand as it is. So I'll open the floor for a discussion.
I'm gonna need to have this show up. Our practice, discussion we should have legally where they should show up, you know?
I agree.
Nice way, we, we, finish with that. I think even the lady that we voted on should maybe came in this meeting or come by sometime still to talk to us.
Okay.
You know, in a nice way. A good way to speak to, put it in place. They wouldn't have this trouble level again.
Okay.
Show up, they don't want the job, that's alright.
Okay, well said. Yes, sir.
No, I'm in agreement and I was agreeing, in agreement the very first time we discussed it. I just realized that it wasn't a policy, it was just a, um.
Friendly vote.
Friendly vote, I like that.
Courtesy, we looked for courtesy or what have you, but, uh, yeah, since it became an issue, then I think we need to make it a, a policy that they show up or, or they are not appointed and then we need to get that made clear to the people, to the appointing, uh, it, you know, uh, agency or sub, political subdivision, make that clear to let them know that, you know, if you're gonna be seeking somebody for your board, you need to make sure they're, you know, they are able to at least come show their face here one time. Because I, you know, I am agreement, if you, in agreement that if you, you know, kinda can't show your face here one time, how, how, how often will you show up to your regular board meetings, you know? But again, uh, like, as I said at the last meeting, uh, I'm a little familiar with the, uh, the animal world. And, no, I am because of the fact of, you know, I'm kept up with what was going on with the, uh, you know, we even went to mosquito control, was taking care of all of that stuff. I'm familiar with what was going on. So the lady came up here and spoke with us. Uh, I was familiar with the lady, you know, and, uh, I was ready to move that off, you know, to be honest with you, it wasn't that serious for me. You know, we was appointing somebody to a non-paid position.
Yeah, all these people are volunteers.
You know, cause I volunteer on a lot of boards. I usually show up to all of the meetings. You know, cause we got people that we appoint or that have been appointed by us and we, we hadn't taken action yet and they, they not making meetings and stuff like that nature. So you got a lot, you know, a lot to be looking at when you start, you know, picking. I'm saying picking, but being real particular on who has to show up and who hasn't. So if you do it for one, you do it for all. And I was one of the people that was pushing the, let's get this over with. Cause I knew, cause I knew the lady, I seen the lady. But if it's an issue, then you do it one for all. And we're gonna start looking at all our boards and commissions and see how people are behaving on the boards and commissions, not just showing up to here, but showing up to meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
It is nice to see them, you know, especially if we don't know them. Um, I knew Erica. If Mr. Warren wouldn't have showed up today, I still would have approved him because I know him as well. So, you know, it just, it made me feel comfortable with both of them because I know them, but whenever we don't know them, that's whenever I have issue with it, but we need to be fair across the board.
Yep.
You know, just tell them they need to come. You know, you wanna serve, come. I, I understand that things happen and I, I don't know what happened at the last few meetings where people didn't show up. Um, I was trying to be understanding because of the job, so, but I do like to see people. I do like to hear from them whenever they wanna serve on the board, so I think it's probably a good idea.
Thank you.
I, I agree, you know, I think, I think, uh, I'd like to see the individuals here, but I do, I do wanna be the devil's advocate, you know, that these boards and commissions are extremely important to the community and to this organization. And, and if we box ourselves in where we can't get people to come in front of us and we can't fill these positions because there's volunteers, then, then we, then we tied our hands and we have come seats open that we can't fill because they don't wanna come. And, and that can happen because it happened on the parish council. I saw it. And, and so in order for us maybe to possibly exist, not to box ourselves in, that we can have an alternative that they interview with you in worst-case scenario, if they can't come in for the council, so we don't create a position where we can't elect a seat. A commission is important. So that might be something we can think about, you know, that we can add into, to the resolution that, uh, if they can't show up for the council meeting, that they at least interview with the mayor and bring that information back to the council. Cause I think these positions have to be filled and to be functional and, and we may, we may back ourselves into a corner. Just my thoughts. But I do agree, I'd like to see them in front of us.
Okay. But, yes, ma'am?
I think they have, they should have to come before us, um, whether we know them or not. Um, Warren had his whole family there. They were all supporting him and everything. Um, and it was like, this was a big thing for him. And it should be a big thing for the person who's getting to be appointed, whether they come along or not. But they should be able to come before us and on the night that we're going to appoint them. And that should be written in stone. No, not just to go see the mayor, cause we have to vote on them. You know, the mayor doesn't vote on them. We do. So they need to come. They need to be responsible enough to come. If they can't make it on, for one, uh, meeting, please call, text or something. Let somebody know that you're not gonna be able to make it because that's just being irresponsible. Would you do that on your job? Not call and say you're gonna be late or you couldn't come in that day? No, you're not getting paid for it, but it's like a job anyway because you're agreeing to do this. So I think it should be written and they need to come before us.
Good, thank you.
I agree with, uh, Councilman Let Better. Um, I mean, I think she and I, the last time we were the only two that voted no, but here's the thing. Um, I agree, it's a responsibility. Also, I think we need to empower the boards that when there is people who are not showing up, that they vote them off. Follow the bylaws, cause the bylaws normally take care of people who don't attend the meeting and they should know that we're gonna be, that we will stand behind them. And the other thing is, I think we need to do a better job of publicizing when we have, when we're in charge of, of the, uh, appointing somebody to a board, we need to have, do a better job of publicizing that we have a position open and that we're looking for somebody who really wants to volunteer and help us solve this particular issue. Cause I think a lot of people don't know because they, people tell their friends, people on the board tell their friends and then that's who ends up getting on the board. But the fact is, is that if we really, really went out there and told the, the public about the positions that are open, I think we might get better candidates. Not to say that the ones we have are not good, but where we have people that are not attending the meetings and doing their job that they volunteered to do, let's replace them with people who really wanna be in these seats because I think we have a whole community of caring people that would really step up if they knew these things were available. But they just don't know about it. So I think as council people, one, I think they should be, they should, they should have to, uh, appear. Um, and we should make sure that we got the best possible person. Cause sometimes it'd be nice to have two or three people to decide between because it's popu, it's, it's been marketed and we got three people interested for that spot. Be nice to be able to figure out which one's the best and then put that person on the board. So my thoughts on it.
Good. You got anything?
I mean, I, 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 I get what everybody, I get what, I'm, I'll say that, I agree with everyone and I also agree with Ricky just said. You know, you, you got, there's a fine line, I guess, cause we do have a problem finding people that are sitting on these boards. And if it takes them having to come stand up in front of us for them not to be on the board, even though I know, not gonna say I know the person, but even though I know they can be a good servant to that board, that's gonna make them change their mind whether or not to be on that, but that, that's, I don't know, that's a sticky one. I mean, I appreciate what, appreciate what Warren did, I mean, of course, I mean, but knowing him, he's a great guy, he's a standout guy. So, uh, he will be here no matter what. Um, so look, I, I don't know, that's, since we're in discussion mode, you know, I guess you would call it. I don't really know exactly where I would sit at this point. Cause I, cause, so you just said that the boards have to get together and they have to pull somebody off. We have to vote on that, correct?
No, I think their bylaws normally give them the permission.
They come to us for the trial.
They come to us for the trial.
Yeah, that's what I called it. What happens is the board can remove them and then that person can come to us and the city council becomes a, it becomes a judge.
Like the appeals board.
Pretty much comes to us.
We become, yeah, yeah.
It still comes to us.
It still comes to us.
That's what, that's what, that's the point I was trying to make.
If they, if they balk it, right, right. If they don't balk it, they go.
Fight it, then it's a done deal.
Now, we'd have to look at everyone to see, cause I don't know if all of them have that.
Correct.
That's Housing Authority.
I don't think all boards have that written in there.
Yeah, and I don't think they have bylaws either.
When they don't, then obviously we can come back and we can help them make that decision. They can come with their evidence of that person not being in attendance or whatever. But for the ones that do, we need to empower them to do that because we shouldn't have to get involved because it's in the bylaws. Unless there's an appeal.
Cause I saw the floor, right?
I know that some of them don't have that in there.
I saw the, I saw the floor, correct?
Yeah, you can have the floor. Yes, sir.
You moved it to me.
Yeah, I kinda did. Back to you.
Won't let it happen again. Oh, I'm joking.
And seven more minutes.
That was good.
But at the end of the, like I said it last time in the last meeting, at the end of the day, these buttons right here, w- we can decide whether or not we want them on that board or not.
Yeah.
Regardless of there, there's an ordinance in place or not. So that, that's where I'm at right now in my head. But I, look.
If the bylaws say they gotta go?
Talking about, no, no, talking about putting them on the board.
Oh, putting them on the board.
Yeah, yeah, we voted.
We vote on the, that's why I said, we have the, we have the power right here in front of us to either put them or not put them on that board.
I was still getting.
Right, no, I wouldn't, yeah, I get what you're, sorry if that was confusing, but, uh.
Power of the button.
The power of the button.
I don't have one.
So, yeah, that's it. That's all I have to say on that.
Okay, good, good. Jeff, I mean, we made the whole circle tonight.
No, one thing you could say is, you could say that they won't be approved if they don't show up unless it's a unanimous vote to approve them. I mean, I could see situations where you want to move forward and somebody's got an excuse for not showing up. And anybody could, you know, could, could cast a no vote and prevent it, but you wanna give yourself the option, I would think. If everybody agrees. And I don't know whether you do this as a meeting rule. I mean, I have these meeting rules that I carry every meeting. And we pretty much follow these, you know, we talk out of turn and talk too long and all that kinda stuff, but.
Yeah, we do.
We do a pretty good job.
Why do you look at me?
No, 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 we do, we do a pretty good job with this.
Not me.
And you don't, you know, you don't wanna choke down discussion.
That's right, I love discussion.
Never, we've never, in this administration, we haven't done that. This is probably something ought to be in the code of ordinances, but I would, but I would leave room for unanimous approval of somebody who.
I kinda like that.
Is being re-approved or can't make it or whatever, and that, that leaves anybody the, the right to veto.
You can follow Mr. Jeff's idea and get something going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I just gotta say this. Excuse me, y'all. I strongly disagree in comparing this to a job. Strongly. I've been serving on boards for like fifteen years and I don't mind going, cause the reason why I show up, because I'm learning so much. Like, uh, Smile Community Action, I've learned so much over there about, you know, the community I represent. It's hard to get people on boards. It really is. That's why I'm adamant about this, cause I know how hard it is. We had a meeting this morning, I was, uh, uh, selected to be on a board and they had eleven board members. Four of them showed up this morning. It's just, it, I don't care where you, it's, I don't know about other states, but I know around the community, this was a board lap, it's, people don't, they, they, they don't commit. And some boards are laid back. Some of them don't have policies that say after three amputations, you're gone. Cause they know how hard it is to get people to come. And then some of them meet, they went from meeting a month, once a month, so they went, uh, to meeting one every quarter. For, guess why? For attendance. It's always about attendance. It's crazy because you meet, you say, oh man, we only meet once an hour, but boy, that one hour sneak up on you so fast for free. That one hour sneak up on you so fast for free. And you'd be like, okay, I gotta go to my meeting again. But I know it's hard. I'll, be honest, I'm gonna be honest with you. I liked that idea that Ricky came up with. Then, of course, Jeff came up with the other idea about approving them. And he said, why? He said, because, um, if they have, if they're getting re-approved, that means they've proved to be a good board member, uh, from, from where they were. So why hold them back from being re-approved on that board? They've proven that they're a good board member on that board or commission. I'm gonna just say, you know, I'm, I hear a lot of stuff and I keep up with everything, believe it or not. Ricky said, uh, let them go in front of the mayor, right? And then we said, oh, no, we, we need them to come in front here. But listen, just to be, uh, messy. We send the mayor to go look at stuff all the time without our, with our approval. All the, every meeting.
We just send him to negotiate.
We pray, I mean, not pray, we vote to let the mayor, uh, we negotiate, we, we, we vote to let the mayor go negotiate on our behalf. So what's different with him negotiating on a, on a person on our behalf? We do that all the ti, and mayor, by the record, for the record, you're doing some goo, good, good work. But early on, I had some calls that said, why y'all letting the mayor go negotiate everything for y'all? I think I might have shared that, which is, cause I was concerned. I said, well, and we still doing that practice, you see? So that's an option. I'm not saying I agree. I like Jeff's, I like Jeff's better.
I just like Jeff's better as well.
But to say that, you know, th- they need to come in front of the mayor too. I mean, they need to come in front of, I like, well, we don't go negotiate these deals with the mayor. We vote to let the mayor go negotiate the deal, cause we trust the mayor. So as another option, as another option, trust the mayor for them if they, at their leisure time. Now, if they don't go meet with the mayor about their board, then we know, you know. Everybody wanna meet with the mayor. I don't care what they do.
I just don't wanna get us.
Everybody wanna meet with the mayor. Y'all know that. They jump out with it all the time, Dee, to go meet with the mayor, you know that. Then they gotta call us and say, the mayor didn't have time for us.
We defend you a lot, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank y'all.
So, can I?
Get the calls.
Yeah, sure. Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanna kind of amend a little bit, um, about what he said about the preapproval. We're assuming that they're doing a good job on the board. It's just that their time's up. We need to get some feedback from the board to say, yeah, this is, person has been a good board member. And I guess for me, again, I know, I haven't been here that long, haven't been on many boards. But the fact is, is that if I sign my name and say I'm going to be on a board, I'm definitely gonna try and be responsible and go to the meeting. So when people don't go, then that's the wrong person. That's the wrong person. We have to find a different person. I know it may be hard, but it may be the way we're soliciting people to be on the board. Maybe we haven't come up with the right way to make sure people know about these boards. Uh, and that's why we're not getting the, the people that we want on these boards that really care about these particular issues. So all I'm saying is that i- if that's important to us, that we wanna make sure that people show up and they come in here and they tell us a little bit about themselves so we know that's the right person, then let's make them come in front of us. If we wanna do unanimous for, I mean, we need to say though, okay, if they're on vacation, then no, why should we wait? Let them come the next time. Or, but if they got COVID and they were supposed to be here, then of, of course, we don't want them to come in and maybe we could go ahead and approve them if it's unanimous. But one person can stop that as well. But the fact is, is that there ought to be some parameters around that. I mean, just, I forgot or I just didn't feel like doing it, then how am I supposed to know that you're gonna go to a monthly meeting? If you can't come one time in front of the council to tell, to just say, hey, here's this, I'm Dee Dee Johnson Reed and I wanna be on this board and I'm, you know, committed to helping in this particular way. I mean, to me, that's what we ask, when we're asking people as a board member to do. We're asking them to be responsible, help us solve a problem. If they're not committed to that, then let's pass on them. I'd rather not have somebody sitting in the seat than have somebody in the seat who never shows up and prevents us from having a quarrel. So that's just my take on it, again.
Thank you all. Well, this kinda gave me some direction. This issue will be coming back and, uh, we'll be able to craft it and hone it like we want, like we always do. That's the point of this. You know, I, I get the message and put things out there and, and thank y'all very much for the job that all of y'all do. And we slowly, this is, you know, my one hundred and sixty-second meeting.
Wow.
Okay, and basically what we've done is improved every, every step of the way. In the six and a half years that, uh, almost seven that some of us have been together, uh, the three years, knocking on three years that the rest of us have been together, we've done nothing but worked through each issue at a time with nothing but honesty and transparency. And we haven't all agreed, and so what? The minute that's over, it's over and we come back together. So can't answer better than that. So this will be revisited, we'll have more discussion on it and we'll figure it out.
So may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we have a list of those things we need to revisit? Cause I got a couple of things that I brought up that I haven't seen us talk about since.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure on the list.
We do have a list and anytime you wanna bring something sooner, just let me know. In other words, you know, it's not an exclusive list, but yeah, we, uh, we got a few of them. We got a few of them. Yes.
As long as they don't get addressed before the things that I got on the list.
That's not a problem, okay?
Councilman, a little shame on you.
Sometime the issue, but no, y'all all know that if y'all have something that either we have neglected to do or it's fell by the wayside, or you got a new idea, just bring it because we, uh, that's why we're here. This is, this is game day. Cool. Thank y'all. Councilman's remarks. Councilwoman Mark Card, start on your side.
I'm good for this week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Rule about it?
I'm good as well.
Good, thank you.
This is Snell Grove. Is that a doctor or is he a therapist?
He was a doc.
Lives on your street.
Yeah, he was a doc.
Died the other day, very prominent killer.
Who's that?
Snell Grove. Doctor Snell Grove.
Yeah.
His son's a doctor I know. The big pile on Noah's Street, next to Body Shop, our buddy.
Yes, sir.
Our, one of our main, our main buddy finally picked it up. The parish worked on it for a lot of times and they finally got a boat left. The big pile is gone.
I saw that.
So I appreciate anybody can watch what y'all put in the street. We got a couple of call, I gotta call it too. Oh, the mayor, your secretary's telling them, uh, the silver or whatever's telling them, uh, you gotta get a dumpster, you know, already kinda. Oh, the mayor, your secretary's telling them, uh, the silver, or whatever's telling them, uh, you gotta get a dumpster, you know, already, kinda, putting the word out a little bit.
Remember that our contract is based on the eleven thousand households that we have, it is a household contract, it does not take into account empty lots or commercial, and it never has, it didn't when it was gardens.
And our tax doesn't either.
And our tax doesn't either, so we have no way to pay for it. We are working with Pelicans to educate our citizens, we are telling them when they call. We have Jimmy, and sometimes we have one officer, Rusty Mo, that has also been kinda working under Jimmy sometimes, or with Jimmy, I should say. 'Cause next thing you know, Jimmy's gonna want a gun, that's not happening. He works with Jimmy, but they are educating our...
He needs to come before the council get that approved.
Yeah. They are educating our citizens as we run into issues, which really hadn't been happening in the past. Yeah, which hadn't been happening in the past. So we are really trying to tell people exactly like Mr. Broussard said, you know, this is why your stuff's not getting picked up, this is what you did wrong, you know, and trying to educate them, because we are spending tons of money with Public Works, uh, picking up stuff that we can't continue to do. If we were a community that had its own dump, its own, you know, way to do that, and we didn't have all those tipping fees, that'd be one thing, but we don't. So anything we pick up is going to a five hundred dollar, a fill-up dumpster. I mean, it's cost us a lot of money. Anyway, thank you, Mr. B.
You finished?
Yep.
You finished?
Yes, sir.
My turn. So just, uh, just, most of y'all have been aware of that I fully had intentions of running for parish president recently and did qualify, but due to a family illness, illness with my business partner, my brother, uh, I chose family over politics and, uh, chose to withdraw from that race. But on another note, I fully intend to serve as, uh, mayor pro temp at a hundred percent level to finish my term, and fully intend to run in 2024 to continue serving the city at full my capacity.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm gonna have, um, Neighborhood Watch this month. Um, we've been on a hiatus for a while now, and, uh, it's gonna be, um, the second Thursday in this month, and I'll be sending out notices to the people that normally come and all. But of course, the, um, community is invited to come. And I know at our last meeting, I did announce that I was gonna be, uh, a candidate for mayor pro temp, and I guess I'll have an opponent. Game on.
Game on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, I'm not running for anything. I'm just messing with you guys. Oh, so this Saturday, we're finally gonna have our St. Matthew's Cemetery cleanup. And so we're asking the public to please come out and help us. Uh, I wanna say thank you to Mayor Pro Temp Ricky Goncalo for giving us the poison, uh, so we were able to poison the grass twice. So if you pass by there, you'll see a lot of grass, but it's brown, and so what we're gonna do Saturday from eight-thirty to twelve is, is as many volunteers as we can find, we're gonna go out there and we're gonna clean up that, um, graveyard. And the other thing is, is that the veterans... Oh, okay, I won't remember the chapter, but I'm, I'm gonna remember. They are going to bring flags for all the, uh, grave sites that are for veterans that have been buried in that particular graveyard, so we'll be able to put some flags on those grave sites, which is a really nice, uh, recognition, 'cause we have, uh, uh, veterans from World War One in that graveyard. So as we clean it up, we'll place the flags out there, and, um, hopefully, we'll get a chance to, to poison it one more time, so that once the fall comes, all that's brown, and we won't have to worry about it again until the spring. So we're asking if you have a team, softball team, football team, basketball team, whatever, kids need some volunteer hours, please come out on Saturday at eight-thirty. We'll have drinks and stuff and make sure that we have some snacks for people to eat. We're also asking if you just have a kid, or if you're a grown-up and you got, you have, uh, equipment, lawn equipment, please bring it out, 'cause we're gonna need lawn equipment to help us, uh, to kinda clean this thing up. Anybody and everybody who wants to come out, especially if they have a loved one buried there, we expect you to come out and help us this Saturday. So, oh, go ahead, I was gonna say...
You got the floor, I saw you had, um, a barbecue as well on the sixteen or somebody, had a community barbecue in the...
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, okay. But before I say that, I wanna say that, um, the cemetery cleanup is being sponsored by Sons of Kings, um, Councilman Lewis and myself. So, you know, we're, Councilman Lewis has been great about this, 'cause this, this, uh, cemetery is in my district. Uh, next time around, he won't be in office, but the person who takes over, it will be in their district. Uh, so we've always partnered on all of these things when we, you know, when it's something to do with the community. And so I just wanna thank him for doing that, because he doesn't have to come out there, and he does every single time to help me to make sure we get this thing cleaned up. The following Saturday, there is going to be a community picnic in Weston Park. Um, it's the You Are Wonderful group that's gonna be hosting this picnic, so please, um, go on Facebook, take a look at the flyer, please come out. I think this starts around eleven o'clock, from eleven to five, there're gonna be activities for the kids, uh, so please come out and really enjoy some time with the community before it starts to get too cool. Thank you.
I have none tonight, thank you.
All right.
Could I say one more thing before you?
Yes, you can.
We are, uh, gonna have a voter registration education, um, drive on Sunday uh, at, after eleven o'clock mass at St. Edward Catholic Church. So, um, refreshments will be served, and if you're not registered to vote, uh, please come on out. If you need to change your address, we'll be doing that too, so come on out, um, and we hope to see you there after the eleven o'clock mass on Sunday at St. Edward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next meeting is September nineteenth, and I don't have any remarks tonight, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Thank you.